Councilman Clough, if he will offer our invocation, and Councilman Belliston, if he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dear Father in heaven, we thank thee for this day which we have to discuss the affairs of Washington City, Utah. We ask thee at this time, while there are so many people whose needs are diverse and great, we ask to help us with the wisdom and the judgment which we need to make good decisions on behalf of our citizens and for the benefit of this great land. We ask thee to have a special blessing upon those who are serving in every capacity to enhance our community and to care for all those who live here. Help us at this time, while we're discussing the needs of this town, that as we do our best, that we'll make those decisions that will have the highest benefit to both our residents who live here now and those who will live here in the future, in gratitude for all those who've given so much to give us the city we have now. This blessing we ask at this time, that thy Spirit may be with us in all we do, in the name of thy Son Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you.
Please stand and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman, for doing that. We'll move on to item one, approval of the agenda. All entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, if there's no discussion, I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda as outlined. Looks like we've got about fourteen items.
Second.
Motion and a second?
Turek, aye.
Belliston, aye.
Granger, aye.
Cluff, aye.
Ward, aye.
Thank you.
Item two, announcements. Anything coming up on the calendar that we're not aware of that we need to announce? Okay, if not, move on to Declaration of Abstentions and Conflicts. Anything to declare from the council? Okay, item four, consent agenda. To approve, minutes from the City Council meeting of 2:13:19, and to approve, looks like two final plats. Final plat for Brio Phase 5B located approximately Mill Creek Spring Drive in Villa del Norte. Advocate Cole West, Reed Scow. Consideration to approve the final plat for Prada Pecanah Phase 1 located approximately 475 North and 100 East. Advocate Craig Engel.
Drew, I actually have a couple of questions on these final plats. So, building 910 is not going in, is that gonna come in as a whole separate plat?
Which, oh, and Prada Pecanah?
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like they're just doing one through eight, and then they'll bring in those two.
As a whole separate?
Yeah, as a Phase 2, because this should be Prada Pecanah Phase 1.
So, there was a, also, there was a conditional note on the detention, because it's all gonna be underground. It's not showing on this, right?
Right, I think we just want to make sure that note was put on there, and again, the Public Works is who wanted that on there, and they won't sign off until it is, or the last signature that goes on the final plat.
I didn't, I didn't see the note, but then, but the, um, the underground is entirely, it's, the city's not gonna have any responsibility for that.
Probably correct, until it gets released out at the other end, coming in as it, at its regular flow, what, you know, we normally have to take anyway, is it's not full retention, it's detention.
Is that a note that needs to be on the final plat?
But we had...
It was in the conditions.
Yeah, see, this note will have to be added, that's how, you know, note number seven, I think, well, it's actually six and seven, both kind of address that.
Right, I just didn't see it on the final plat.
It's not, it's, that's why, yeah, we had it last week, we usually pass everything through on a final plat for the next week, condition will have to be on the plat. Does that make sense? That's often what we'll, these note, these conditions on the back, they get, we look at it, especially when it's Public Works requesting it, he's got that.
It'll be added to the final plat.
It'll be added on the Mylar, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that that's gonna take place, where it's, I would've thought it would already be on there. It was a condition of the preliminary.
Right, and so we just made, and that's one of the things, we came back and said, those, those are the things that are missing here, is what you gotta have, have on there, so. I'd say Kathy'll look at that plat, I'll look at that plat, just Starky'll look at that plat, Brandon will look at the plat, so it'll go through four or five sets of eyes.
On the final plat for Brio?
Mm-hmm.
The thirty-foot trail sewer and access easement?
Yes.
And I, I expressed some concerns on access in and out of that parcel when it came through before, and now we have this, is it, I'm just curious how future development, they're gonna have to bring their own in, but intended to be a drive access?
Yeah, we kinda talked about that, and we hope that, well, we don't want it to be, you know, so, we don't want people going through that commerc, you know, that subdivision to get into that commercial at the end of that cul-de-sac, so.
Ted, it's, it's a thirty-foot trail sewer and access easement. We're not gonna have a commercial drive access through it, I think it probably ought to be noted.
As, you mean, is, in what way, just that no, it has no vehicle access, is that what you want, is a note on there, or what's?
Well, it was never designed to be drive access for commercial development.
Right.
It was designed to be a cul-de-sac.
Correct. I thought it was, the way I remember it, I thought there was a few members on the council that wanted to see if that was gonna be put in to make it accessible. I don't know if the developer...
Yeah, we had, we, if you remember, we brought it back, we had that discussion, looked at it, decided better accessed off the main, bring in access off the, off the main.
Right, just to take, take that out of a subdivision and not have to worry about it, so.
I agree with that, I just...
Well, you just wanna make sure that it doesn't become an, you don't want it to become an access.
Right. What is actually on the open space there at the end of it? What's proposed to be there?
Well, nothing, it was left open because they do have some, you know, utilities running through there, and they're also just putting their trail, their master trail system through there on top of that, which they can use, a lot of people will do that, so.
I'm just wondering, if the, if the open space at the end there is actually approved, that kinda solves your problem, doesn't it? If there's landscaping in that open space, not necessarily gonna drive over it unless it's an emergency, but, so, anxious to know what's in that open space.
And, make sure we don't give them a curb cut. That would be, that would kinda take care of ninety percent of that, but it, it should be a trail running through, is what it's supposed to be.
I think Councilman Belliston's asking, like, no one put on it, so, down, down the road, but maybe things have changed, and the text memory's not quite as sharp on some nerve, and access takes off then.
Yeah.
That's, that's what you're asking. Kinda solidifies it.
It was never intended to be a drive access to the commercial, that's, I don't want it to be done with.
Okay. Probably wouldn't hurt to add, as a condition, just to make sure that that open space does not become an ingress egress vehicular passageway, however you wanna word it, to something to that extent, that it can only be used for easements of utilities and for trail.
With that, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the addition of the, um, the note on Brio final plat that says it will not be commercial ingress egress access, and that the conditions for the Prada Pecanah Phase 1 for the detention, or we make sure that we get them on the final plat.
Okay, motion and a second?
Mayor, the applicant is here, is a matter of discussion on the proposal, do we want to hear what they have to say about the open space and their intentions with the roadway?
If council would like that.
I don't know that it matters.
For vote?
I'm looking for a voter, if you want Reed to come up and...
I don't know that it, no. Turek, aye.
Belliston, aye.
Granger.
Ward, aye.
Thank you. All right, those are passed. Item five, height waiver, consideration to approve an additional height waiver for a structure located at 55 North, 300 West. Advocate Robbie Staley, Cotton Town Village. Probably asked to be excused, he's had a family deal, he was gonna try and make it, but...
He's hoping to see him, he's been excited about this.
There he is.
All right, we'll keep this kinda short and simple, the two-week holdover is now complete, the item is ready for City Council action. Again, the applicant is requesting waiver of the maximum height in this PUD, they're seeking for the maximum height to be extended from the thirty-six to a forty-six-foot height overall. Be glad to answer any questions you might have in your two-week thought period.
I move approval. I think it's gonna be a delightful-looking icon for that area, and it doesn't appear that we've had any concerns about the height from views of anyone centered in the center of the development there, where it will really not result in an issue for other people, it appears, so, I move approval.
Second?
Motion and a second?
Ward, aye.
Granger, aye.
Belliston, aye.
Turek, aye.
All right, that's approved. Item six, preliminary amendment, consideration to approve the preliminary plat for Whitworth Estate located approximately 240 West and North of Harvest Lane. Advocate Matt Ferguson.
Thank you, I stated the applicant's request and approval of a preliminary plat for the Whitworth Estate subdivision. The applicant is proposing twenty-six lots, and the area of coverage is ten point three zero seven acres. The zoning at this particular location is a single-family residential twelve thousand square foot minimum, referred to as the R-112 zoning designation. The surrounding zoning to this parcel is residential agricultural half acre and R-115 to the north, with RA half and PUD to the west, and R-18 to the south, and then Washington County zoning to the east. This preliminary plat is in request and following up to the recently approved annexation into the city, along with the assigned R-112 zoning to this parcel. Proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning, the request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances in this location. Staff reviewed the request and recommended approval with conditions of the preliminary plat. The planning commission reviewed this request through a public hearing at their February sixth, 2019 meeting. And, again, they actually tabled it and wanted the applicant to come back with a few adjustments on the plat that they wanted to see, so a week ago, they brought those back, and were on the plat to the satisfaction of the planning commission, therefore, they recommended approval onto you, the City Council unanimously, with the findings and conditions that are in your report, so, and they're the standard eleven. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have on this particular proposed project. You can see the zonings are R-112, all the lots are bigger than that, so. See, the average of them is in the high thirteens, low fourteens, so.
Can you pull that up on the aerial, or the, yeah, the aerial view?
It's that kinda green patch in between homes on top, that sliver of undeveloped property right there, and so that's the subdivision with the street running basically right down the middle, lots in the north and south.
So, the lots there, nine through four, well, I guess three, three is up there as well, they sit up on the top end of that, and they tie into the, I'm just trying to figure out the spacing on that, are those already in place?
No, this is, let me just...
Also, simply, it's a rectangle subdivision. Yeah. Street's gonna run right through here. Right. With the lots in this area and in this area. They're just equally divided, all down to the next street.
Where's the retention?
Detention.
Detention's gonna be on this end, if you can pull it up, right here. There is a tailwater, you know, ditch that runs through right now on the north side, that's gonna be piped and run down through the street. That was one of the concerns, a lot of folks on the north two subdivisions.
A pad was that water on, along the back, so developer's actually gonna pipe it on 20 East and bring it down to New Street, and then it discharges off of 240 into already existing pipes. Again, it's tailwater.
Yeah, what other concerns did the planning commission have to resolve?
Well, some of them where we couldn't resolve, people wanted to force block walls to be put up, and we don't require people on subdivisions to do that, PUDs we do, but standard subdivisions we do not. Like I say, a lot of the concerns had to do with that water up there, for, for most of the folks, it was, a lot of the ones were coming in on the two subdivisions above, and the biggest issue was that, that tailwater. And Mr. Adams, Brian was here, whose water it is, and just wanna make sure that, hey, you guys need to be aware, my tailwater runs right down through there, and so, you know, you'll have to, and they already knew that.
And that tailwater's not going into these detention areas, correct?
No.
They're piping it through?
They're piping it, they're taking it from 20 East, across the property in the street, and again, you can pull up, there is a, with all the lines running down the street, there's one that, you know, talks about, it's a, an irrigation tailwater line made to carry that. So, and then the detentions on the west end of the property. These areas, and that'll be what they're having to grab for the subdivision. Everything will have to drain to the street, it'll go into the detention ponds and then be released at its normal rate, that it's going now.
What are the site distance requirements that are mentioned?
Site?
Distance requirements. Condition number eight? What is it?
Any walls or anything else that they might put in there, they just have to make sure that it doesn't impede on, when you, when traffic, when you come to a stop at that, that intersection, so. It's, well, if they landscape that area, those bushes have to be held below three feet, always trimmed down to keep that...
It's not for neighbors, it's for traffic.
It's for traffic.
And the land on the east side there that's dedicated to the city, that's all just because of the road.
The other, yeah, it's the road that's being improved right there.
I guess, yeah, it's on both sides, actually, yeah.
As you can see, on, you know, this house, this five east, there's curb and gutter that goes right there, this development will be bringing in all that curb gutter and sidewalk as part of that dedication to the city. And again, this is one of those weird situations, it used to be, this was county property on both sides of 20 East, so they're actually dedicating their half of that road that we actually been driving on for umpteen years, I'm not even gonna guess how many, it's actually been going over county property. So, this is just how these annexations and then subdivisions and dedications bring all that in, so.
Sounds like a lot of fun for Public Works. All nothing but nonstop.
Yeah, so you should notice on both ends of this project, dedications of property, because again, it used to be county land, then it just recently got annexed in, they got their preliminary plat coming up right here with you folks, and then it'll continue to keep moving forward, and, all right?
Are any other questions for Drew, or for the applicant?
Mayor, if there's nothing else to discuss, I make a motion that we approve the consideration for the preliminary plat for Whitworth Estate located approximately twenty-four, two forty West and north, north of Harvest Lane.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second?
Turek, aye.
Belliston, aye.
Granger, aye.
Cluff, aye.
Ward, aye.
Thank you, that is approved. Item seven, public hearings and related resolutions. Item A, public hearing for consideration to approve a zoning change request, Z-19-03, request on open space and R-16 residential, single-family, six thousand square foot lots to, minimum to a PUD. Planning, development, and AP, administrative and professional, located approximately on the southeast corner of Washington Parkway, the main street. Advocate Utah State, Utah School and Institutional Trust Land Administration.
Thank you, Mayor, as stated, the applicant's request and approval of the change of zoning of approximately forty-seven point seven acres. Again, this is located at the far end of Main Street, where the Washington Parkway will eventually run through in its east-west direction at that point. Now, the request to change is from the current zoning of open space and single-family residential six thousand square foot of the R-16 designation to the proposed planned unit development residential, administrative, professional, and open space zoning designations, as you see in the exhibit before you. The PUDR request is for the purpose of developing twenty-eight point four-one acres into a multifamily residential development at a future date. The applicant understands that postponing the design and specific use of this area requires them to bring back a specific plan for approval through the public hearing process. As part of this application, there are two areas within the twenty-eight point four-one acre parcel. One portion labeled Area 1 is twenty-two point five-five acres, and the other portion is Area 2, and that is five point eight-six acres. The area number two portion is being given for a debris basin being utilized by Washington City for help with solutions to the flooding that has been occurring in the overall vicinity. This debris basin will play a, play a major role in bringing a solution to help with the stormwater problems that currently exist in this part of the city. With that said, the applicant and staff have agreed that due to this basin being given as a major part of the stormwater system, the densities afforded to the five point eight-six acre area, we wish to have transferred to the remaining Area 1 to be incorporated into the twenty-two point five-five acre area. That will be giving this area, when presenting the specific site plan at that future date, a density of roughly one ninety-eight to three hundred and forty dwelling units per acre in that twenty-two point five acre area. That equates to the density ratio of nine to fifteen dwelling units per acre. With that, also is the AP request for the proposed development of eight point six-one acres into future administrative and professional development, again, at a later date. The open space part of this is what's basically remaining, and that will be placed over that ten point six-eight acre area, that's basically a wash area right now, and we just wanna leave that in open space. For your reference, the general plan land use designations for this location is medium-high density residential, which carries the seven to twelve dwelling unit per acre density ratio. It's also civic and open space are on that general plan land designation as well. Surrounding zoning to the parcel is R-16 to the east and south, open space to the north, and planned community development, the Brio PCD to the west. Staffs reviewed the request's zone change, wishes to recommend approval of the zone change request. The planning commission reviewed the request at their February sixth meeting. The planning commission, after having their public hearing unanimously recommended approval of Z-19-03 for the zone change request from single-family residential six thousand square foot minimum and open space to the proposed planned unit development residential for the twenty-eight point four-one acres, administrative, professional for the eight point six-one acres, and a designation of open space area on that remaining ten point six-eight acres. Also recommending approval of the density ratio for the PUDR portion to be bumped to the nine to fifteen dwelling unit per, per acre to be used in the Area 1 designated area, and that was moved on to you, the City Council, based on the findings in your report and the conditions as well. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have on this proposal.
Drew, what portion is currently zoned R-16? Can you tell me?
I'll just, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go to the maps and kinda just show you, we'll bring up the general plan, because that's the best way to try to, um, explain it. Oh, sorry, I brought the general plan, I needed the zoning, man. So, that's the area, the white is the open space, the yellow is the R-16. Again, this was because of years ago, even before my time working at the city, this was kinda laid out, they thought the new warm springs would kinda move that way, maybe purchase some SITLA land, there was always concern about that open space area, how we were gonna deal with things back, I mean, this is twelve to fifteen years ago.
So, basically, the open space, most of that open space area is gonna become the...
The debris basin will end up eating up a lot of what you see the open space.
Now, is that zoned or general plan, zoned R-16 currently?
It's zoned, yeah, this is the zoning, so that's the, you know, you can see where it goes up, and even where that AP up here at the top part of that, because you can see where the, roughly where the Parkway is, you know, it's through that white area, which is open space, so, you've got a little bit of open space, R-16, then open space, and then again, I went back and just kinda showed you with the general plan, this is what SITLA had given us, you know, in our general plan update a couple of years ago, that they redid and put in there, in that pinkish area that you see, the darker pink, I guess, is medium-high density, the light pink is referred to as civic, but AP can fit in the civic, so they're just coming back with some zoning specific for this area. Does that kinda help?
What's the intent for the civic?
I can't, I'm sorry, I can't.
What's the intent for the civic? Is that church slot?
Well, they didn't know, they, they thought it might, but then they thought it could be a good place for a church, but the LDS church came and purchased some property to the east of this, in this other civic piece right here, so that's where the church is gonna go. This was also talked about, and it still could become, the city has had discussions about a cemetery here, and that's not completely closed, but you can put cemeteries in AP zones. So, they fit better in open space in R-16, a cemetery can fit in a AP zone.
This was, actually, if that, on that second page, I kind of reminded me, with the cemetery noted there, it was a discussion we had way back, it's just a potential, we haven't had discussion for some time, but, that's, that's a need.
Yes, on this exhibit, it comes with a...
On some of the plans, it actually showed the potential of a cemetery in the debris basin, so they, they've kinda chipped it up, it's kind of a nice quick one.
If it doesn't work, a church doesn't go in?
Administrative professional is basically office, office space.
Well, what else could go into that civic area?
Well, that's what I was saying, in, in, in an AP, it's basically professional office spaces in the zoning regulations. Well, someone could come and put in, you know, it could be a dentist, it could be a financial institution is one of the...
Well, could, we could treat it virtually, and civic area could be treated as a...
Well, no, the civic is just a designation that was given, but in the general plan, you know, in our general plan, it shows civic, and then, I mean, in any of our designations, it says what zones can go in there, when you, in our civic, it just says any zone. Someone could apply, and if it fits and sounds and, you know, is okay in that area, you could put any zone in the civic. We had the same situation with the school piece down off of Sandy and Merrill, that has a civic designation, but then we were able to give it the administrative professional here about six, seven months ago, so...
What, what, do you know any plans, what the plans are for the multifamily, what the intention is?
I think they're just preparing it for a future buyer, that's what SITLA does, is they sell land to developers, and this was always designated as a medium-high for a townhome project or an apartment...
And this was always designated as a medium-high for a townhome project or an apartment project.
Are they trying to get a short-term overlay?
No, that's not part of this. That would have, I would have had that, you know, if that request would have been there, it would have been under the PUD short-term vacation, so, because we have those different designations now, so.
It was kind of my understanding from the planning commission that this is coming before us now, specifically because of the drainage piece, they're just bringing it all forward at the same time because they are interrelated as that piece.
That's what's driving this.
They're not really bringing this forward to develop it currently this time. They don't have plans. They have other plans they're working on and developments.
That's my understanding as well at this point. The biggest drive is to get this debris basin in for us. And so while we're doing it, they just took this piece and said, let's just get this zone now. So everything still fits with a possible cemetery, but even if it isn't, it'll be administrative professional. You're gonna see a multifamily town, you know, some sort of multifamily housing project on that 22 acres, debris basin on the five acres below.
I would like to see without a doubt, I would appreciate SITLA working with us on the needs of our city to push this forward. We know it's not on their priority list, but making that move behalf of our drainage and flood, you know, mitigation prevention, appreciate that very much.
Drew, what discussion has taken place concerning that open space, that drainage area as far as erosion protection or? Historically, I mean, obviously now we're starting to develop around that and those soils, I would think are pretty conducive to erosions. I don't know what discussions taking place, maybe it's more.
I'm probably gonna have Mike, because I think, have we been having a study done in this area anyway, Mike? Is that, I thought that's what I was told, that this was already, I think Brandon might have known, but I think they've already got somebody looking at.
Yeah, I guess one of the questions I have is oftentimes when we have developers who need to develop, they take care of these types of things. They armor the banks, whatever we need done. But this one, they're just saying, okay, here, we're gonna leave it open space. That becomes your problem to take care of.
Are you talking about the open space area?
That wash that's coming down through there, which carries water very heavily on the cautions.
But that doesn't change ownership, right, in this plan?
Well, you're probably right. I mean, it's just left open space there, but we make things that.
So in our master plan, if you don't affect the wash at all, we'd rather leave it in a natural state. Pretty much it's kind of hit the areas of erosion unless we have really, really big. If they go in and they adjust the wash or move the wash at all, want to encroach on it, narrow it up, then we require all the.
Yeah, I guess I wasn't looking for that. I was looking more for saying, okay, here's the wash. Let's, let's, let's control the erosion process at this point by armoring the banks or whatever it may be there.
And when, when it comes in for development, they will have to do the drainage study on that. And if it identifies any areas that could be a problem, that's when the study would address that. We put it into the construction drawings.
So those will not be executed until construction begins?
Right.
Or is imminent?
But what we try to do is we try to keep these washes in as much of a natural state as possible. Unless there's something where it's a big issue that we do have.
I can appreciate that, but as development occurs, that wash is gonna carry more water because now we're collecting it and sending it to one place. As purchasing as it is now kind of.
Yeah, but so.
Well, you're really not changing that part though, are you?
Well, today you're not, but when that development all occurs above there, you're sending it down that wash.
The detention with our detention, we're not increasing the flows, we're increasing the duration, but the flows in that wash can't raise. It's gonna be the same flows whether it's developed or not. It's just the duration because we're detaining those flows.
Are you referring mostly?
Detained in those other projects you talked about? Oh, I know. It sounds, it sounds good, but it doesn't happen.
It's that concept of permeable soils will have different things.
I want to make sure that we're protecting, this is gonna be a development. The Sunday is gonna.
So a great example is the Virgin River. We have our erosion protection boundary. You want to encroach in that boundary, you do the armory. We don't necessarily have it in our washes or smaller tributaries, but it's something that we definitely will look at, but like this area, it comes down to, they'll definitely want to fill and level out ground, which in turn will.
Some of that, you go up and look at the black wall of the existing development that's there, you can see the erosions. It's already that back wall's about to be taken.
Well, some of them have already put some barriers out there.
That's what I'm saying. So you can see that soil's gonna erode. And I guess that's my only question, or make sure the part taking care of that.
That was long before my time. That's been in 30 years.
Like I say, that's the reason I bring it up now is to say, do we need to look at that as part of this process? If you feel comfortable with it, I'm fine.
Yeah, down through that, we'll be dealing with that because all this water is coming into our basin. So that wash will basically be cut off about at 87 north. And that, that wash water will now be diverted into our debris basin. So all those back homes there now will have that wash running back down, so we'll divert all that water into that basin.
So, sorry, which, at which house are you?
He's saying this is corrupt. From about here, all of this will be in the new basin. So this will be all in that new design and all that stuff you see that is so bad right here. So all the kind of, these fields, it's part of things.
Yeah, I'm surprised those homes haven't washed with.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
But you're also right, you know, we're seeing that we're getting a lot more rain.
Well, and as development occurs closer up, it becomes asphalt and pavement and cement, which doesn't absorb water, which now you've got a little bit of sand and stuff that absorbs some of it. And so I just see those flows getting heavier as they, as time comes on.
But some of that water above, as they develop above that, some of that will actually go into pipes to be piped out of, no?
Yes.
So you're not necessarily, everything above that's not necessarily gonna come into this debris basin?
No, they'll go into this basin area because that's the natural drainage, so they can put it into that natural drainage. But all development has to detain their flows, so they're not allowed to flow off their side any more than it flowed prior to development.
So they have to, they have to put some retention on, on those up above them.
Any development has to do detention. And then, I think some of you went to the meeting we had with the state where we're starting to get pushed into more of a, they want us to do the 80th percentile retention, which is, it just doesn't work in our area, but it's, they're getting more restrictive on what we're allowing to discharge, so. This is something that we'll address when we get actually into construction and.
So just continuing with that, so the portion that is still flow, the channel is still flowing through there, that it starts to move the boundaries in the future. Who's above the debris basin, years after that's built and the water starts to cut in or erode either to the east or the west, whose responsibility is that then?
It'd be the property owners. They're gonna retain it as an open space and get credit as an open space. If becomes their issue, they have to do.
So then, so then we, when it, as they're putting this through that process, we need to pay particular attention to how each owner is allocated that property? Because that could, that could literally be, right, and if it's multifamily dwellings, then.
Well, but it will fall under a nature way.
I see, yeah, probably even better. The owners on, the owners that are already starting to see some of the undercut of some of their fences, that's really their issue and what, what opportunities do they have for changing that?
Some of the major drainages, we actually will take ownership of them. This is, I don't know that this is in that, in our plan that shows that this is one that we would take ownership of and maintain. Possibly could be, I just have to get out our master plan and look. Larger ones like the Coral Canyon, the wash that comes through Coral Canyon, we actually will maintain that wash through there because that is a very large drainage that comes through Coral Canyon. That's another one that was kind of left in open, that's actually a very good example. That was one that was left in an open space, but they addressed areas where there was gonna be.
And that's, yeah, that's my concern is exactly that.
Walls in that address those areas.
Correct.
And that's, that's what I would envision this would be when they come into action.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure the fact that just because it was left open space then, now we don't look at it. That's, we're not developing there, so we don't look at that.
Yeah, drainage is probably one of the biggest things that we have to read in.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure that, yeah.
Then this not only has the drainage, but it also has a spring at the top there.
Correct, yes.
And is any plans for that spring? I mean, there's almost a little, somebody swam in it. You can see evidence that somebody's been up in there and.
Yeah, there's no plans for it. We don't have rights. We don't have the rights. Springs pop up, come they go.
Springs come, they go.
Yeah. It's not a large producer.
No.
Doesn't, this, this isn't considered part of Middleton drainage. You know, feeds in the middle of Middleton.
It's milk creek.
That's what I meant. That's what I just said. That's what I meant.
In our master plan, I don't think so. I don't talk about it. It would be a separate subject.
All right, any other questions for Drew or Mike? Hey, this is a public hearing. Any of you out there that have an interest in this proposed project? Any questions or comments? You're welcome to stand up here and fire away. You're gonna wonder where the water's gonna come from? I mean, how they're gonna turn on their taps and drink their water? Well, if it becomes developed, the Water Conservancy District in Washington City is obligated to provide water to the residents, so we'll find a way. You can share your hose. You could put a hose. Anybody else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close this portion of the public hearing.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to close our public hearing.
Second? Motion and second?
Ward, aye.
Clough, aye.
Ranger, aye.
Ballot, aye.
Attorney, aye.
Thank you. Item B, public hearing for consideration to adopt a resolution to open and amend the Washington City 2018-2019 fiscal year budget for the funds of Washington City Administrative Service Director Kimberly Roos.
Getting in, Mayor and Council. So tonight we have the proposed budget amendment that we have reviewed over the last couple of council workshop sessions. So this amendment includes increases as well as decreases to the fiscal year 2019 budget. The overall result is a net decrease in the city budget of $1,352 and six, or excuse me, $1,352,630 or a 2.23% reduction. Some of the items that we had discussed regarding the proposed increases that fall outside of standard operational adjustments that are included in this amendment are funding for the fire department to replace their outdated personal protective equipment and purchase additional rescue equipment, emergency funding for embankment shoring along the Sullivan Virgin River Trail, and the irrigation study, some vehicle compressed natural gas kits, the acquisition of a sewer cleaner truck, and the addition of a storm draining water project that will help with the Telegraph Street stormwater capacity. So I know that we went over more in detail about some of the major items that are included in here. Turn it over to you for the public, if they have any questions.
Any questions for Kimberly?
Just the last time where you had said that there was up to a 75% reimbursement for the Sullivan R drainage. Is there any more updates on that?
No, it'll go for, it has to go to the executive board for approval for the flood control authority.
Okay, so that's weeks, months out, figuring out.
We have two votes on that board, so.
Troy and I are on that.
We have two votes there, so.
I'm hoping you guys represent our city well.
I can't remember when the next meeting is. You have that off the top of your head? It's not, it's not next week.
It would be a matter of just a few weeks, I'm sure.
So if we do receive that authorization, then we would account for that in our year-end budget opening for the reimbursement.
And the Telegraph Street flood?
That storm drain project.
Storm drain, that is, that's that low area that sits out there by the.
Oh, okay.
It's in conjunction with the Sunwood property project that's taking place. And we're contributing to that so that it upsizes and it will be able to take care of what our needs are. But if Mike's here, he can come up and address any specific questions you have on that project.
Where the dip is over here, this other side of St. Collins where the water.
Yeah, okay.
It's taking care of that.
So which property, which is in conjunction with, with what it's?
So the intersection, the Bella Vista Development on the hill, the intersection where the car wash is, that line would go in across that intersection, take the water as it's coming down from the east, coming down Telegraph from the east hill, capture water there, take it down through and down around Cherokee Springs and also pipe all the stuff that's behind Cherokee Springs and Horizons. It's an open ditch now as well as the Sunwood Development there, storm drainage water. That will help us.
Which one is Sunwood?
That's the new one. That's the new proposed there.
Yeah, it was called something else.
Now it's in lava fields?
I, I don't remember the name, but, but, so what that will do is down at the dip there, we always get a lot of water in there.
That's what I thought it was. I just, somewhere was throwing me.
Surcharges the pipes, because the pipes come down Telegraph, surcharges the pipe with all the water. By the time they get into that dip, it's the most, man, it starts coming up out. This will capture the water, get it out, so we hopefully won't surcharge that.
Any other questions? Again, this is a public hearing. Any of you out there that have any questions about that? Okay, I'll make a motion to close this public hearing.
So made.
Second.
Motion and second?
Attorney, aye.
Ballot, aye.
Ranger, aye.
Clough, aye.
Ward, aye.
Thank you. And we'll move on to item C, consideration to approve a resolution to amend the Washington City 2018-2019 fiscal year budget.
Mayor, if there's no discussion, I make a motion to approve the resolution to amend the Washington City 2018-2019 fiscal year budget.
I have a motion and a second?
Ward, aye.
Clough, aye.
Ranger, aye, with commendations again always to excellent budget work.
Thank you.
Ballot, aye.
Attorney, aye.
Okay, that's passed. And we'll move on to item D, public hearing for consideration to adopt a resolution to internally finance a fleet replacement model for fiscal year 2019. Principal amount not to exceed $230,000. Will be loaned from the water fund to the fleet fund for a term of five years. Interest rate will be a fixed rate of 3% compounded semi-annually. Kimberly?
So in 2017, the council approved our rolling fleet replacement model in order for us to address the aging fleet that we have. The goal of that model was for the, for us to be able to replace our vehicles every seven to 10 years depending on the use of those vehicles. So this fleet model was determined that the most fiscally sustainable way for us to fund it was through a series of internal loans that we would do rather than having to go out and borrow money on the market. We're taking advantage of, of funds that are available for investment internally so that that interest is paid to the city rather than to a private agency. So each year, we come forward and issue the internal loan based on the, the series of vehicles that were approved in the budget. So this resolution that's for you guys tonight is to approve the funding in conjunction with the vehicles that were approved as part of the fleet replacement model in the 2019 budget. If there's any questions about that.
I would mention, Councilwoman, this, this interest rate does reflect, I believe it's a 10 basis point margin. Talked about that, so about a point one, point ten, point one oh margin. We talked about that before you were asking a question about a margin. We visited on that, so it's about a 10 basis point.
So each year, we'll basically come forward with a level of internal funding depending upon the funding source that, that we're looking at for the investment purpose.
Any questions?
Your question.
Councilwoman? Okay. All right, thanks, Kimberly. Again, a public hearing. Any of you out here interested in our fleet? Besides Mike Shaw. I see nobody jumping up to the mic, so I'll entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close our public hearing, Mayor.
Thank you. Second? I get a second?
Second.
Eric, I. Ellis, nine.
Ranger, I.
Cliff, I.
Ward, I.
Thank you, and we'll move on to item C, E, excuse me, consideration to approve a resolution to internally finance the fleet replacement model for fiscal year 2019.
Mayor, if there's no discussion, I make a motion to approve the resolution to internally finance the fleet replacement model for fiscal year 2019.
I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, motion and second?
Eric, I. Ellis, nine.
Ranger, I.
Cliff, I.
Ward, I.
Thank you. That is approved. Item eight, ordinances, consideration to adopt an ordinance approving zone change request Z-1901, request from R-112 residential, single-family, 12,000 square foot minimum lots to R-2, one and two-family residential, located on the west side of the corner of Washington Fields Road and Washington Dam Road, applicant Jeremy Green and Kyle Erdley.
Thank you, Mayor, stated the request for the zone change, the two-week holdover is now complete, the item is ready for city council action. Just to remind you, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of Z-19-01 for the zone change request from the single-family 12,000 square foot minimum R-112 designation to the proposed one and two-family residential R-2 zoning designation onto the city council. Be glad to answer any questions you might have had in your two-week time.
The only ones I noticed that came up was the trash issue, and then is that gonna be an oil road?
Well, I think all three or most of the applicants are here, I'd just as soon have them answer what the plan might be on that, or if they have a plan on the trash collection, so I don't know if Matt or Jeremy or Ross or Kyle, whichever one wants to come and address that.
Or oil roads, I don't think that on an oil road on either end of it.
Well, the, the near, the easiest, like, place to keep it off the, oh, Matt Green. The easiest place would be to take him to the north and, and deposit him on the street there in the New So Division, because there's that easement that runs through there, I mean, that's gonna be the easiest, most effective place to do it.
There was some discussion, I think comment from staff, there's potentially enough space to actually go through there and collect down that road, from behind?
Probably is, and before I thought about, we probably want to ask the collection agency what they'd rather have see, that's sometimes what they'll come in for saying something, we just have them give them the agency and they write letters saying they're gonna do it right here, or they're gonna do it right in one, I'm not sure, they're gonna collect here, so. Yeah, Republic. Probably to say.
We did, we did have to reach out to them as part of this, and I'm trying to remember, I mean, they wrote us a, a letter or something, I have to look back and see what it was, but they're well aware of it, so.
Second part of the question she asked, is the road going and paved all the way into, so it comes across to all residents there?
That is not yet the plan, I mean, if.
Well, I think that entered your trash pickup, because you aren't gonna send a trash truck across if it ain't paved.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, it's, it's like compacted road base, so I mean, it's, it's a good road, there's been a lot of rain lately, and it's, it's not been muddy, so I mean, we've had concrete trucks in there, track hoes, I mean, it's, uh,
I share her concern with that personally, I mean, I know that straight zoning, we have a hard time enforcing that. Same token to me, this is like a subdivision, in subdivisions, we require old roads. I mean, that's just part of what we do, is part of bettering our community, and so my feeling is, is it should be asphalt.
I like to second my feeling with that, too, with the consent of that possibly being a consistent roadway for people accessing on both sides of that hillside. That was one of the parts that I was most excited about this development, and seeing it not an oiled road is one of my concerns as well. I agree, that being a very common use, not only for dump trucks, but significant traffic.
I don't know, I mean, up to this point, that has not been a discussion point, honestly, to get it paved.
Well, that's a part of it, because to this point, we've had general plan discussions, now we're in zone change discussions, like I say.
I mean, obviously, I'd like to see that, it would be nicer, but.
As a developer, if you'd like to see it, I bet you can make it happen.
But feasibility, feasibility could be an issue, just, I, I don't have any idea what it would cost, I mean, it's quite a long road, so.
Part of being developers is doing things, doing them right.
You know, I disagree with that, but he's got three property owners, two to the north and one to the south that's part of the equation, and these are existing lots, it's not a new subdivision that's, that's being under construction, so.
No.
I don't disagree with you, it'd be nice if it was asphalted from all the way down up, but like I said, it's, I don't know what our, what our options are, where it's, like I said, it's being straight zoned, I don't know if it comes through the preliminary plating phase.
This is all ours.
Right there.
Just to put, yeah. All right. If your neighbors are mad at you, you can say, I tried.
I'm hoping to talk to neighbor someday into doing it, but it just kind of depends, so.
Fair.
Any other questions for Jeremy? Agreed. Okay, thank you, Jeremy, appreciate that. Anybody willing to?
I'd make a motion that we approve an ordinance approving zone change request Z-19-01 from R-112 to R-2.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second.
Ward, I. Cliff, I.
Ranger, I.
Ellis, nine. Eric, I.
All right, item B, consideration to adopt an ordinance approving zone change request Z-1902, a request from open space to I-2 heavy industrial located approximately landfill road, applicant Plum Holdings SGLLC.
See if I can find the other exhibit on here that might be the one, we had two, but. This also has been in a two-week holding pattern, and that two weeks is completed, the item's ready for city council action. Again, just to remind you, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of Z-19-02 for the zone change request from open space to the proposed heavy industrial I-2 zoning designation as shown in the exhibit. Again, you'll notice some of those weird fingers that stick in, that's due to hillside areas they didn't want to deal with and have in there, so they left it in the open space condition, which is probably a wise decision to do. I'll be glad to answer any questions council has on this particular item.
I do got a question, is there? Well, this is a zone change, is there an easement that goes across for CST to their property there? Their access is coming up through the middle of this property.
I don't know, but Mr. Hermanson sitting back there is the engineer, and I would hope that they've researched that, find, so Bob, why don't you make your way up here?
Bob Hermanson with Push and Gudgeon, appreciate you guys' time. Answer that question, yeah, there is, there is an access easement that goes through there, and the, the future plan would be to incorporate that into a road network and improve it. But yeah, just to maintain it.
The only comment I have is that when we discussed this last time, we just talked about is the code adequate, is it specific enough? Does it allow some things we might not want to allow? That's probably my question that we can resolve right now, but.
It's, it's a great question, you know, and probably several responses to that, and I just, you know, because I have some I-2 zoning that's a whole lot closer to, you know, in the heart of town versus this one, probably be, you know, have more heartburn on some of them than, than say this one in its location at the point.
Well, I agree, but some of those would be tempered by their location where this wouldn't be, I, I had the same point, I, I'm pondering here that if it's disingenuous of me to vote for this in a general plan to go to that, because I don't think with, without our code, like I said the other day, being kind of muscled up a little bit and gone through, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable about zoning this straight zoning for industrial, just because I don't, I don't think our code is, it's just not something we've done a lot of, so.
Well, probably the concerns, most of them fall under, as I looked at, at those, they, they would fall under this conditional use permit. And that's always that iffy thing, because they, you know, and I, I don't know, I still will argue some, some sides of that of, on you can't say that everything in there, you know, because there are certain things they would not be able to mitigate out.
Well, right, but the, the way, just, I was just, just looking at the manufacturing point is, is in the manufacturing, it specifically lists off several things that would have to be referenced by a conditional use, but that, by doing that, that reference, that means anything that's not on that list is wide open. So that means our imagination had to be pretty precise, and it's a fairly short list.
Well, let me just help you with some of that.
Then you don't have any choice, it just, it just comes in, they can just put it in, and there's, and there are some types of things that would I, I can imagine that I wouldn't necessarily want out there. Now, if, if they're going PUD with this, I'm probably fine.
Let me just, let me touch on, on a few of those points, is that just in zoning as a whole, if something's not on a list, doesn't mean that it, it's opened up to do? That pretty much says no. If it's not in a permitted or on a conditional use list, you know, and I know you picked out the thing that says it may be in other zones, et cetera, I think you have a lot more leverage to deny something if they're just trying to take advantage of some, hey, here's my proposal, would you consider that this as a CUP versus something on a list that says it's by conditional use permit, and if they mitigate out, you have to let them do it. But on that one particular area that you pointed out, I don't think it carries the same, they can't just pull something out of a hat and say, well, I'm gonna throw this under that other and say that I'm going for a CUP and you have to give it to me, because it's not on the list. So you could deny those for, for justifiable reasons.
In the CUP, but if it was straight zoning, if you, if they came back to us, that's what I'm pondering here, this is just general zoning. The disingenuous of me to, to say yes to the general zoning, then they come back to straight zoning. I, I'm, I'm concerned about at that point, if it's straight zoning, because I think we do have some holes in.
Well, the one thing, you, you want to articulate that differently, right now, they're coming under the existing code. So even though you might have some concerns, the code needs to be revised in the future. They're under this code right now, so I'm not saying you have to approve, I'm just saying you have to articulate that just slightly different.
Even in the general plan phase here.
No, this is zoning, the general plan is done.
So we always ask for findings, of course, in all levels, and the further you go down the line, you want to have stronger and stronger findings, but again, it is important that we recognize, even though we may recognize some deficiencies within the existing code, the application is in.
Yeah, I, I had my memory, I should have read that closer, I had my memory set differently. Because I had thought in the general, as we had discussed this previously, that they were looking at coming back to us with a, with a CUP. That's what I was expecting to come for us, I just.
Well, they would only have to if it, if that's what they're going after, either that's listed as a CUP in, in the I-2, or if they try to fall under that other, and that, that one's a hard case for, for people to, you know, it's a great option if there's a, a good use there that isn't listed, that we wouldn't mind having, it's a great tool to use to get something. It's also, you, that one that says other, I don't think you're tied under the same. Just because they brought it under the CUP doesn't mean you have to give it to them in that, that one, the one you read out of, I remember what you talked about. You read out of two different ones, but I think the one that concerned you was that other, you know, it says not listed, et cetera. Well, we left that as kind of an opportunity to allow someone to give their case before you on a particular item, but doesn't mean that in that particular CUP application that you would have to give it to them. In the other that's not specified anywhere. Not in this case, I, I would argue that all the way back, because it's, if it's a, if it's a listed CUP by, by use, then you are. But we have this provision in our code in every single one of our districts that allows for this option that they can take advantage of to plead a case before you, but that would not fit under the the, what that thing we worry about in a CUP where you have to give it, because it's not listed as a CUP, and, and those are the ones that are listed as uses under CUP, then yes, it follows that point. But the ones that were given is maybe, hey, we'll see if the city might buy on this, because it's not listed anywhere, it may be a new whatever, doesn't mean we then have to accept it as CUP, because it's not listed as one. That help clarify that? Anything else I can?
Any other questions? Ready for a vote?
Mayor, if there's no other discussion, I'll make the motion that we approve our zone change request Z-1902 to change from open space to I-2 heavy industrial located approximately.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second?
Ellis, nine.
Ranger, I.
Cliff, I.
Well, I like the idea of the project coming in here, and I'm, I think it's a great use for it, I, I just still retain my concerns that are, it's just not certain that our code is robust enough, and I hope the applicant brings us some great, great projects, and I believe they will, I truly believe they will, I'm, but you don't really need my vote for this to pass, I'm gonna say nay.
It passes four to one. Item C, consideration to adopt an ordinance approving, approving a general plan amendment request G-1901 to revise the current lines of OSMD, MHD, open space, medium density, medium high density to a feathering effect moving from the river to the industrial area and landfill located along countryway on the north side of the river, same applicant.
Thank you, Mayor, and it's kind of the same beginning, this is and was in the two-week holdover, which is now complete, the item is ready for your action. Again, just to remind you, the planning commission reviewed the request at their January 16th meeting, they unanimously recommended approval of G-19-01 for the applicant to readjust the boundaries of the medium high density, the medium density in the open space. And again, this is general plan designations, not zoning, just, because this one is a general plan amendment, so I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have had in your two weeks on this particular request.
Yeah, this one, I got a little bit of heartburn. So I know it's, I, I don't understand why we're going through this amendment, it's, it's already a listed P, PCD, which allows them to move densities around, right?
Yes, they follow the current PCD. Can't just come in and, you know, they'd have to, it would be, it'd be such a major overhaul. I probably wouldn't accept it as a PCD amendment, I'd want a new proposed PCD.
So is this basically acting in place as the original PCD, it's?
Well, no, this, that PCD will still, because that's the zoning, it's still there. This just changes the general plan underneath it for a designation, if they come in with a zone change, this is then what's, how they're applying their zone change would be based on this general plan.
But what they're doing is they're asking for an additional 42 roughly acres of medium high residential. Right? I already have a concern, we are, we it's been discussed, already have a concern with industrial on one end, and obviously, there's the industrial that's down Washington Dam Road, the traffic, the, what we're dealing with it. Forty-two acres of per acre, or whatever the number is, is quite a bit of additional density.
Twelve would be the max, yeah.
And so 12.
I'm just, I just, yeah, no, I, I just want to make sure that it's.
Are you saying 12 units?
12 units per acre would be the max on a medium high, it's seven to 12.
Potentially another 520 doors.
Yeah. And, and again, staff looked at that, felt it over again, I'd give you my onion analogy, as I always do. The only reason that, you know, it took away my, you know, I took little Tums just knowing that I've got two landfills that are a stone's throw away, I'd rather have a town, no, I'm just, just hear me out, and I, it's just my feeling is I'd rather see a townhome project there than single-family medium density, that's just, no argument, and I'm just saying that's, that's how.
Maybe so, I just, where you, where you're sandwiched between industrial zone and industrial zone. I don't necessarily like the densities there anyway, much less adding another 500 plus doors, so. So, you know, I'm not okay with it, and I think. It's fine to move the densities how they want and a new P C P C D plan. I I just don't want to throw the additional density, but I'm not.
Yeah, cause they can come back with a P U D and if you fill your.
Well, we allowed uh, uh, Sullivan on Heritage Place to move their densities around and shift it in dust. And I think that's fair and fine to do, you know, they can, they can cluster their density within the overall project. They're entitled, but they're already entitled that. Okay, I don't, for me, I'm not okay with your decision. I do think. Councilman Bellis brought brought up a great point about what we can do for slow traffic. Cause we certainly wanted to discourage large trucks going through there as well.
I'll bring that up later. It's not appropriate at this point.
Okay, appreciate that. So basically, this is what was proposed with the hope of adding an additional roughly five hundred and twenty.
Yeah, basically, I'll just bring you, here's the exhibit as it sits today. Uh, this is what the general plan, you know, basically has. The blue is the open space, is the river X, you know, on the floodplain, the green is medium density, the little red area is the medium. Proposed before you is the blue, the green, and now black instead of red. So the blue is the open space still, the green is medium density residential, the black is medium high. Medium high, that's your multifamily, this, so you.
Drew, what would, what would be the? It's like, yes, if where we're just at general planning, if we were to go into general planning, it's P U D. You say they're coming back with a P U D anyway, so if we.
I I don't know if they, I haven't, I'd I'd rather them come up and say that, I've kind of, maybe.
Okay, nevermind, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I.
So if, if the intention is to stay P U D, does it benefit us at all just to change it to P U D to general plan or to say, hey?
Well, it it kinda does, and I've had this discussion with some folks, is that when when I, when we do go to a P U D and there's a general plan underneath it. We kinda keep them, you know, they, we we have given them that ability to bump up, we, it's like a mini bonus density. But we give them those credits if they do X amount, but they only get a percentage.
My thinking was, because we do now have a general plan P U D. And and other than changing through this process to just to say, okay, look, we acknowledge that maybe we want general plan a P U D. Does that do away with current zoning of P U D?
No, they're they're, again, they'd have to change the zone from the current P C D right now. Or e, they can either build it like it is, it's an approved project. I don't think they're gonna do that though.
Or they could shift it around with the.
Well, they'd have to amend, you know, because again, there's, there's things in that plan that said the kind of homes that were gonna be built, all that they'd have to follow.
No, I understand that, I guess I'm just.
So, so.
I share some of the same concerns as.
Yeah, now, the the issue, the issue is if you, again, try to say, well, let's just do the whole thing P U D, there. There are no densities in our general plan P U D, we just did that as, we're trying to help before we changed our whole P U D ordinance. We thought that might be a thing, but we ended up changing all that, so, you know, yeah, that is in the general plan, I kinda. I was hoping not to put that on such a big area because that could put us in a, a bind, cause we didn't state densities in it. You know, I didn't mind it being on smaller pieces, um, you know, this is a a big area, a lot of acres. Um, that's my only fear of that, is that there is no density then. You know, if we could keep going through these rounds, denial, denial, and I don't wanna put the city in that kind of a, a position where they think then they can take it to court. Because they keep denying me all the time and there is no stated densities and, so I don't know if we, I I just feel the more I thought about that, I had an uneasy feeling about that.
Drew, could you help me understand, um, when you're saying this just would be too difficult of a process to amend, what do you mean by that? I'm I'm trying to better understand that I'm getting the conversation.
The P C D, oh, because it would be a major overhaul. I mean, it'd be better to start from, it's, it's kinda like people say, if you try to, you know, you can ask a contractor, is it easier to? Remodel something or just tear it down and start from new, everyone will tell you, it's easier to tear down the old and start from new. And in this case, I would say it'd be almost so much easier instead of trying to.
But within that easier and talking with what Councilman Bellison is saying, just rather than saying, okay, that's too difficult, how about we just throw in a, in a bonus density and call it new thing? I'm just trying to find out which route makes the best sense for us as the council.
My, in my opinion, if this is uncomfortable for you, I would probably, I think, is. I I think the densities are needed in the medium high and to let them have it, maybe, I wouldn't cut them all the way back to that three point, whatever acres they had down in that red area. I mean, if it, you know, you can see that, that's what I'm talking about, that's, that that's kinda harsh, especially with now that we just, we have landfills out there.
Remind me again what what medium density is?
Medium density is basically your multifamily, so you're looking at R, you're gonna have an R three. It's either gonna be a P U D for that area, it's gonna be a multifamily P U D or an R.
Medium high, but not, what's medium, is that seven?
Oh, medium is, medium is your R one eight, R one six zone, so it's the, it's basically your four and a half to six dwelling units per acre. Yep, so I, getting back to your point, you know, I. Kind of feel, you know, I mean, I do have feelings, a lot of people don't think I do, but I can see this, this small red area. You know, versus giving them all the black area, maybe, maybe not as much.
It's already, it's already entitled at about five hundred and thirty.
Yeah.
What you're talking about is stuff like the density, of course, again, I, if there was a, if there was a road that outlet. Off through two industrial zones. It's a different conversation for me, but you're you're sandwiched between the two, that's why I have on it.
Yeah, and there's some estate zoning, you know, that's around the river, that's all part of that as well, it, there's a lot of mix out here, there's no doubt about it.
We've had plenty of conversations with the folks back up that road to deal with it.
Yeah, so anyway, getting back to Councilman Club, I'd probably say, you know, the the heartache might be in all that black area, maybe not as much. You know, and where that, what isn't too much, what is too little? That's, you know, that can be debatable for till midnight.
I'm just, I'm hearing these two conflicting things, well, let's keep it, no, it's, it's not changing, but we'll just give them this. Uh, it it just feels, I'm trying to get a better direction of what seems, what I can do, what's here, it's better just to scrap it, I'm trying to feel that out better for the council.
Yeah, and going back, because if it does go to P U D and then in a townhome project, that might sometimes be the best for folks. Is I'm just thinking about that credit that they can get, maybe, you know, cause again, if you give them all this, they could come in with a P U D over the black area and add, and put in some things and even get. More than seven to twelve if they met and, but you'd have to accept it, it's not that they're guaranteed it. You could see an increase of twenty five percent in that area if they did the things that were asked in our current P U D ordinance. So that's why I say that area might be too big because of that, you know, the potential of that. You know, even the numbers you put and add twenty five percent if they met all that stuff, now, again, you're not by.
That's still subject to approval.
That, exactly, and I wanted, I was, my next point is I'll say it still has to be approved, but you don't have to accept that, they can apply for that doing this. And you can just say, no, I don't wanna do that.
But if it's partway down the entitlement process through the general plan approval. Then it's a little tougher to deny it. I I mean, it's one thing to deny this and then say, okay, we'll give you some bonus, bonus densities or whatnot.
Exactly.
On the next stage, but, but it's a whole lot more difficult to say, hey, you're entitled to the general plan, why, why aren't you giving it to me? You're being arbitrary, right?
Right, that's why I say that area, if you felt, you could shrink that down.
Well, my concern is if we can work things out at the initial part with our developers rather than the train wreck that can happen later. That's where I'm really looking at, what what can we meet on the common ground at the start of this, cause I don't like running into a question marks as much as possible. If there's those things that just feel uncomfortable now, they'll feel uncomfortable later, and so I really appreciate.
Well, and later, conditions can change. Developer today doesn't mean it's gonna be the developer tomorrow that may be putting a project in.
That's by what it is now, right?
That, always keep that in mind as well, I just wanna help you as much as I can, that, you know, even though sometimes you you make agreements even in here, and it's not that, I'm not blaming it, it's just, you know, sometimes six months from now. They found a better project, sold that, moved on, I know, never happens.
That, well, I mean, that, it's just a fair concern that I have, is you wanna enter in a good relationship, knowing that it is a new plan order, working with an existing. Uh, conditional properties, I do wanna understand things clear at the beginning rather than trying to work out through as much as you can.
My concern is. Again. An additional five hundred plus residences have an outlet through industrial zones.
And I agree with that, nice hearing coming from Councilman Bellison.
Yeah, and I could say I have more heartburn when it's a eight thousand square foot lot, having them right next to that versus a a townhome that may not be, I just.
Again, I, if they want to put townhomes against the industrial, I have no problems with it.
Yeah, it's just the amount of them.
It's, it's the quantity, I mean, we we open ourselves to issues with, right now they have entitlement at five hundred. Again, like I said, five hundred and thirty, I, I'm against development.
It's a very significant rise.
Yeah, so basically, before you're not, you have an op, you know, your options are always, you can accept and approve what the planning commission recommended. You can accept and modify it, or you can deny it.
So. Where the general plan is, if they, when they come back through zoning, they don't have to do, they can scrap the P C D and come back in as a P U D. They come back in as a P U D.
Or straight zoning.
Those densities and cluster those densities, don't have any issue with that.
Correct.
Right, under our current ordinance, there's no reason why they couldn't do that already.
Well, in this area, if we don't give anything right now, you know, coming back up here. In in those areas that you see, yeah, I mean, I, it'd be kinda hard pressed on the green area, which is medium density, for them to try to get. Multifamily with credits. That that'd be kinda pushing an envelope.
But on a general plan, you can't say, okay, I'm fine with changing the zones here, but I'm limiting the density.
No, you can't limit the density, you limit the area.
Right, so I can't put a conditional limit on 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 units.
No, cause then you're getting arbitrary, but you can, you can condense the size, you you have that ability, if you say, I'm only, instead of, how many acres was it again? Forty four point five four, you can say, that's too many acres for me, you know, I feel more comfortable at eighteen or twenty, so whatever the number may be.
I feel more comfortable at five hundred and thirty units total.
Just throughout everything.
They want.
Over the whole, whatever acres.
The whole parcel.
And that would be, I I don't know how we could get there without, you know, that'd be.
Well, we could table it and then go ahead and rework their their plan if that happened.
And then they could say, here's where my mediums, here's where my, yeah, here's my R one eight or R one six zone, here's where my townhomes are going, and so this is the acreage, that's a good idea.
Can you help me out on the, on the? The image there that has the red portion? Why, why is it open space in between the red and the green? What was the thinking there?
Well, a lot of that was, was old, was old floodplain and and because we put in a. Like, like, what's that erosion, the erosion control zone came in and changed a lot of that since this was done. And so those boundaries have changed. That, that, that's why.
That went literally through those two projects, through those two?
Well, no, it's just that, like I say, the river can move, the floodplain can can change, but then when they they brought in the erosion hazard zone, that changed a lot of that area. It improved the area out there, but it changed a lot of it.
Cause I, so where would be the access to that? To that portion there that's labeled medium high density, medium high residential? It would have to be, the access would have to be.
The roads would come off of, they would just have their development plan and they would have roads that would come off of.
Through the open space, the way, is the way it was laid out.
Well, right now, yeah, you you can still put roads and all, you just, you know, and I I can even put buildings in. In in floodplain, now the zoning, you'd come back and say, well, I, you know. Probably shouldn't be giving them anything in zone, you know, this, but again, this could be one of those open space, older open spaces for reasons, and again. You know, we would want, if that was a, a floodway, then I would recommend you not give any zoning in it.
Right, but this was a P U D, so somebody addressed this at one point, I guess that's my assumption.
The P C D.
P C D, excuse me.
Well, the real thing is, I I feel like I'm encouraged by the concept and the development, but I, hearing the council discuss and in myself. Just needs a little bit of clarification, maybe it needs a little bit more work before it can, will be agreed upon. There's some significant requests above and beyond what's already given and and maybe it needs a little bit more time to discuss and see a better presentation of how that can even go around.
Sounds to me like the table is probably the best, most of this.
Hey, all right, we've got the applicant here, I'd like to at least hear from him tonight.
Paul Herman from Bush and Judge, I appreciate you guys' time. So just one clarification, I think Drew nailed it right at the end, is that the, the original plan with the other, uh. The past map that was smaller than that. Um, that one was based on the flood control not installed, and that's why all that open space is there. All of the flood controls installed, the floodway was significantly reduced. And that's why now there's a giant pad there. It it's literally giant, there's a giant pad there that runs from that green line. Out to the new armoring that the city installed, two, four FEMA, that's why that's, that's why it was, the way it was then. And that's why it's different now, and so it's dramatically different, like it's, it's much narrower, and you guys just did a bunch of work out there too, did improve it as well. There's a big channel you guys just built through there.
So once again, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the development at all, but it just feels like there's so much that's significantly different. Both in what's been approved and what's being proposed, and they just don't match up enough.
So the other thing to consider with the original plan is the density in that green area was significantly higher than anything that we have here, cause the area was so much smaller. You write the density, the numbers, the dwelling units, yeah, totally, it's, uh, we're, it's, it's more now. But it was smaller with much higher density product type than anything that we have envisioned going there as well. Um, I I'm sorry, I don't know that off the, off the top of my head, but it's, it's significant, if I'm gonna.
See, the majority of the fields has all been low density. You could have come back and, hey, we've got this extra space, let's do some low density in here.
Well, that's what he was, he was saying about the density that they've got proposed, would you be willing to come back in with low density in that area if that's what you're proposing? Or that's what you have in mind, I should say.
Well, that was, so, I honestly, like, even even now, what's been laid out here is this green area that we've been talking about, and then the black area, right? And that's just a typical planning transition tool, this is, that's a planning tool that every planning city and, you know, that's normal, right? But with that said, we understand, and honestly, like, we would even be willing to. This black area, lower it to the green area, make it the same, just make it all green and just, just not transition it. In our mind, we one hundred percent agree with Drew, that as you move into a industrial. Uh, waste facility area, those densities change, and that was the only reason that we did that.
Well, I think it makes sense, I I think it makes sense to do that, because generally, that's, we use those as buffering type.
Yep.
Developments to do that with, but the concern is, is here is, is you're, is you're moving those into there and you're carrying it through the whole project. You're not feathering yourself back out, and if you wanna go high densities up against that, then begin to feather yourself towards those larger lots that are on the other end of that. To where you kind of match up and become a little more estate-ish and have a mixed use through there, high densities here. A little, a little less density there, and then a little less density down here, I think that's what's being discussed and talked about. Is is giving you the the option to kind of play with your project. Uh, I'm not opposed to even maybe allowing a little higher density than the current five thirty and say, okay, let's throw maybe a hundred, another hundred lots in there. Fits with with the expanded acreage that you've gotten out of use. And and you guys figure out how you wanna lay them out within that, makes sense to 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 feather in certain areas, to cluster in other areas and. Maybe leave more open space in the middle of it or something.
Yeah, and we. My question again, what is the expanded acres available? Okay, out of the floodplain?
Yeah, we'll see. Guys took the numbers off the exhibits, plus one for green.
So, I would. Hit the feathering in, you know, commercial areas, you know, with decals and and things like that, and totally agree in that regard. Or the concern that I have is this is an industrial, not a. A retail commercial type of a project, so we're not dealing with residential traffic, or your residential vehicles, we're dealing with. Big equipment, you know, trucks.
My hope is, and you alluded to my desire, somehow that we can make that, the the. Route, the travel route for that industrial area, much more attractive to go up and out and not through these residential areas. And there's some ways that we can do that, and that'll come through the planning process, but. Uh, that was my thinking, is that we, we make that route more attractive route for that industrial traffic, residential traffic will come through the residential areas.
I I agree with that, they still, they still have to get to and from dealing with that that traffic.
Yeah, and you're right, when you got five hundred units in there, you're talking twelve hundred cars. Yeah, and you're right, when you've got 500 units in there, you're talking 1,200 cars.
There is also one other component to consider that's, that's not shown on this map, but was on the previous topic of the industrial portion to begin with. The access that Councilman Belliston referenced, getting to the gravel pit, that's also in alignment with your master plan to connect to the future roadway, what's it called, purgatory?
Yeah.
Purgatory road or whatever.
If you want to put that in and give them another out, then, then great, you know, my opinion will change.
Well. It's, it's part of your master plan, so we're just in conformance with that. Yeah, so which, which would be.
That plant may happen in 2050, 2060, who knows when?
How long did it take? Sorry, I don't mean to cut your fun. How long did it take to get mall driving, mall drivers?
I agree. I agree.
Yeah.
It, it was just something to consider, and, and it would le, if it did go through, it would alleviate that traffic.
If you want to mothball the project that long, then file a need to, to change the service.
Right, but we're not considering that, and so the, the point was just to factor out and consider the overall area in our discussion. And just, just to make sure that I, you guys were on the same page with, with me, and the statement was that the, the black area that's currently medium-high density, we're going to medium-high density, to medium density, to low density. Just, that's what we're calling that plan right there. We have, our project has medium-high density, green is medium density, straight across the river is low density. So we're, just what we illustrated is what we're illustrating there. However, we're fine getting rid of the medium-high density right now and just making it all medium density. And just lowering the density.
What was your intention to go straight zoning all the way through it, or are you coming back through a PUD process?
Honestly, the, the project is so big that the intent is to come in at the PD, but it's going to be in little tiny pods, because it's, it's too big for, in our opinion, to develop at any one time, so like.
Yeah, master plan, your PD.
We're going to do based on like this part of it, but then the next pro, process would be coming on here on its left side, left side of the bridge if you.
That's still 252.
So, let me understand this. The basic idea is you'd like to come up with a, a primary mod, you want to develop, and the, the less of this to be developed later, not a lot of.
As we go through it.
Very much pushed off to the side. This is our focus.
Yep.
And so you're putting it out there with the zoning, so it's known.
Right.
So that's why for you, you're not too worried about the density, honestly, because you have a very specific intent with the property at hand.
Yeah.
With intent of later on giving us the zoning, where later on we'll address it. You guys want to do what you want, great, but you're just trying to find the most reasonable way of proposing it moving forward, it seems like.
And we don't even have, like, just my, obviously my willingness just to, to totally scrap my density right here on the table.
I noticed that was a pretty quick change.
Yeah, like that's where we're at, and in our minds, buffering up, having a higher density product up against industrial, is a, is a direct planning rule. I mean, that's a, that's a known fact.
Hearing them say that part with the part of, they're fine scrapping into the original densities, the intent was to try to do something basically budding up to an industrial to move that and the feathering towards that direction as well.
Again, you just ask for industrial to, to sandwich this, this parcel, industrial to industrial. Like, I'm perfectly fine with the entitled density that's already on the project. I already have 530 doors. I don't, I don't feel comfortable putting that residential traffic, those families, through industrial areas where they're competing with the trucks. You've got 530 units, you can cluster any way you want, in my opinion. Right? Councilman Turd says I'm fine increasing the value a little bit. Councilman Club sounds like he's fine increasing a little bit. I'm not. I just think you have an entitled unit, and unless you can show me another avenue out for people to not have to go through industrial areas, then I have a problem putting more families in that situation.
Okay, yeah, the only other option obviously is to turn the other direction and go down Southern Parkway, right? Washington Dam Road to Southern Parkway to your new interchange, which is no industrial, except for, if industrials, if you're talking about the industrial to the north continuing south, is that what you're referring to? Because if a family wants to leave, they're going to go across the river and they get on, on the Parkway and go where they want. They don't have to go through any industrial, right?
It's just how it can still exist with being in between two areas. That's, that's the point he's bringing up.
But you do on Washington Dam Road into the north, but not Southern Parkway, right?
You're still accessing through Washington Dam Road.
Right, just not through the industrial. That's all I'm pointing out.
Saying the point.
Yeah, but effectively, you're running through Washington Dam Road.
I agree, 100%. Yep. No question. We're going Washington Dam Road, it's just not through the industrial park, that's all.
We are, we already have complaints, we already have issues with big trucks going through that area, people being concerned with it. Again, like I said, there's, there's an entitlement for 530 families to go in there. Anything over 530, I don't want to put families in that, that would end up going there.
Any other comments that I could, could answer?
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
So Drew, can you just show me on the satellite what, what changed with the river and the? What was?
Yeah.
To see the improvements on the flood that's happened, it was only proposed in the first documents, what's happened since, it'd be nice to better understand.
This is the floodplain and the floodway. Floodplain being the hashed area, floodplain being the blue, just the blue zones. You can, again, build in, in flood, in the blue zones. Just have to go through a little bit of engineering and get some certification letters to be able to do so. Floodway is different. You're not allowed to be able to do that, so you can see these blue lines. Now, again, in that previous example, you can kind of see this ghost. These lots right here, and you asked that, that's where it kind of went up in there earlier, was up in that area. Now you can see with these white lines, it's been brought down to the south.
That'd just be an overflow from the floodplain would go back up into there, now it's been moved.
Right, because we have, again, we came in and put all the armoring, or what they just called that, erosion control area, and.
And that specifically?
Well, I can show you, I mean, I'm gonna have to go to this particular, let me zoom over there. This, this public works map actually has that. This is where that, that erosion zone is now, and that kind of helped bring floodplain not so wide through that area. And again, their particular project, you can see where that goes through there now. That orange line is that erosion hazard zone now.
But that was, but that was reestablished by. So guess what I'm looking for? This, these lines were, these are just lines here, based on some physical construction that happened, erosion control. Where, where is the erosion control in that area that modified these lines?
I'm gonna have Bob come up and kind of. Oh, you can see. So that's a rock armoring that goes along there?
So, let me get this straight. Here's a, a concept of where I've heard the council discussing this, where I'd feel good moving forward if it were to move forward. I agree with Councilman Belliston in keeping the density as it is. If there is any intent of changing the density, at this point, is there processes they go, say they did want to change it, is there an appeal process within this, is PCD correct, or PUD on this one?
Well, it's, it's zone PCD.
It's zone PCD. So if they came through and say they, finally, they put everything out there and say, okay, this is what we really want to do, if they came in and did a petition, is that something they can still do within the PCD compact that they have?
Sure they can. They can apply for an amended PCD or a new one.
So why don't, I would be fine keeping it after hearing the discussion. I think it's a very valid discussion that's been brought out, and I appreciate it. Since there's so much that I'm, I'm sensing we're being asked to move forward, if we were to move forward, I don't see enough that's articulated here where I'd feel comfortable with an improved density, but I would feel fine keeping the density and allowing this to be discussed as it be, it's developed. There's been pod discussion with wanting to leave a lot of this out to the side, so for me, as long as the densities remain the same, I, I don't see an issue with this not continuing this forward and seeing what they bring before us, because we can still review this as it's built, as long as we're not approving new densities. I would agree with that with Councilman Belliston.
Well, like I said, I'm, I'm fine tailing it, letting go rework how they cluster to move densities.
I mean, they've made it very clear that they're fine scrapping what they, they had proposed, say, we'll keep the density as it is, and if they're willing to go back to that.
No, that's not, that's not what he said.
Well, let me verify if that's the case, because if I'm wrong, I'm fine with that.
What he said is, we're fine taking the black area to medium density, that's still an increase of 200 plus.
Okay, let me make sure that's correct.
Because that changes from 82 acres plus three, to 82 plus 40 plus.
So I would agree with you that if there is, if there is any density change at all, I agree with the motion to table things. If there is a, an agreement to keep the density as it is, and then maybe petition for it later, that's a later thing, but I agree with Councilman Belliston that as long as the density stays the same and we move forward, that's not an issue, but if there is any change to the densities, then I would feel better with the tabling motion and discussing that in further content.
Appreciate your comments. We're just in discussion with you guys as well. I'm sorry that I don't know this off the top of my head, but the original density, I believe, was in the 500 somewhere. I don't know the exact number.
Sounds about right. Five-twenty, five-thirty?
Medium density by the acreage and, and medium-high density, what the acreage is, they came out to roughly 530.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I, I, I think, I, by memory, it was somewhere in the 500s. I don't, don't remember it for sure, I'm just stating that. Whatever that is, and we agree that that sounds like that's probably what it is, we just need to confirm it.
As it's listed within what's.
Right, whatever it is, in that range, we're, we're fine if, to leave the, leave the boundary as we've shown it, to incorporate that extra area and leave the density alone and do it now. Leave, leave the density the way that it's currently approved.
So five, around 530 units.
Yeah, whatever it is, whatever the actual language is, whatever the PCD is.
But I can't, but I can't put that on a general plan amendment. That's the thing. You, you either need to go back and, and modify your bubbles to, to, to match that, or.
But why couldn't you just leave it PCD as it is and allow them to come?
Well, we just, we just deny the general plan and it's remained as it is.
That's what I said, and they just come back and rework it.
The, the problem with it is, is that the, the current plan has a development agreement.
No, I, I totally get scrapping the PCD.
Okay, okay.
We're talking about getting rid of that, just using the PCD zone to rework your new PCD.
So that, could we, can we do a PCD zone that is agreed on that's with the approved units under the current plan right now?
Yeah, we just deny this and then you go do.
Oh, okay. All right, I just have to come back. I was just wondering if we could just.
The constraints of what was listed here, but in within.
So there won't be additional fees for that process.
Well, no, they wouldn't need it, the general plan.
Because it's already a zone, yeah.
Allocate, allocate the densities.
Yeah, because it's already in place, all you have to do, if it's denied, is just rework, say, okay, here's what we've got. Here's what we've, we've got, we're vested 500 and however many units you're vested in.
Sure.
And rework those units in whatever you want to do.
The, the only thing on our end is that the PUD on our end is, because we're not, like I said before, we're not intending to develop this as one big master plan right now, we're not doing that. We're just trying to do this part so we can develop this one pod, and so the PCD part is tough, because we, we have, we literally have no intent of doing those right now. We're just doing the one, and so if I do the PCD, I'm required to show all of those plans in those bubbles and all, am I, is that correct, Drew?
If you come back, well, if you do as a PCD, but what we did with Sullivan on Heritage Place, they came in, they got the PUD zone, they brought in a, a, a plan later and left one that's undeveloped, don't come back in.
The commercial ones.
As long as it doesn't overall change densities and whatnot. If they came back as a PUD, you're fine to come back as a PUD. This is a big parcel, so it's a huge PUD.
Why couldn't you do a lot like Sid that does with, with these others out here, that they, they bubble them, and they come in and amend those as, I mean, we, I mean, if we amended and changed, they'll come back and say, oh, but we want to move this to this, and we want to move that to that.
Sure.
The process is, it seems to work.
So I guess at this point, either, either direction that we're going there is that the tabling now, and then we'll come back with potentially that option.
Put around. If you want to change the general plan to show where your clusters are, then we should table it. If, if what you want to do is move forward with a PUD zone, and come back to that, then we should deny it. Tell me what you'd rather have.
Well, before. Okay, please.
Unfortunately, I wish it would be easy, because i, i, if, if the current PCD wasn't what it was, it, it's a very. I'm trying to pick the right words here to be kind.
Just don't swear.
It, it's a complicated PCD that had a unique.
Oh, it was very crazy.
It had a very unique, is the best. It was, it was peculiar in a, in that kind of way, and very unique. So I, I really don't want to try to even massage that, because it is.
We're not saying misogynist.
I know. I just wanted to, yeah, but, but to come back for a PCD, I, again, that's a lot involvement. I'd rather it, if you're okay as a council, being a PUD, is what I'd rather use instead of, I, I don't, I, I, in this particular area, because of all the investment for the PCD, and they're not trying to hit all those things at a PCD, the commercial and all the, you know, they're, they're just trying to do this development, so I'd rather it. It is, but my issue comes back to, I, I still have a bit of a, a rub because of what this is right here, and, and you as a council can do, I just don't want to see us, you know, my, my other option would be this. Is that, he's already said that just take everything that's black and green and make it green. Hundred, it's roughly 126 acres. Give it a medium density, let them come in with a PUD that you either accept or don't.
Well, I, I already said I wasn't comfortable with just doing that, because that does put density on it, that could be turned around and sold, and then we're kind of stuck with it, so maybe what I think we ought to do.
I, I say, I just feel uncomfortable if, if they are going to bring in some medium-high numbers in there in some places, because of just that little area versus.
Why couldn't you do this? If, if we master plan it, PUD, and I know that you say, I like to have this underlying zoning, but they've got the, you've got those numbers. So we, we've already discussed it, they've agreed that they want to keep it where it lies there, so it gives you the, the bit, whatever you want to call it.
Right.
A guideline to say, we're five, around 530, whatever that may be.
Which I'm fine with right here tonight on this, this moment, but again, three, you know, he could end up selling this, and I have no densities on that PUD and some other, somebody could come in and say you got your PUD.
From any other person who's coming later, is where I'm kind of, we're dealing with the person at hand.
Yeah, that's all, that's my only fear. I just.
You know what? I'm ready to make a motion.
Hold, hold on before, because I've been waiting for this discussion, because I've, I've liked it, but our own general plan suggests we should have feathering based on our zones. And our, just before your, before your motion, I'd like to get this out there for contemplation to the council. Our own general plan says we should have some feathering with our zoning as it goes in, and they have, they have, they have industry on the one end. We need more affordable housing within the area, and so I, you know, I, I support not increasing the density of the area, but I would highly encourage anything that comes back to us, and I think this needs to come back to us, based on what staff is reporting, come back to us as another proposal. I would like to see that have a mixed use, come out to basically the same number.
So I, I think what I'm hearing is mixed use, but we're not going to increase the overall density.
Right, but still, I support that.
So I, I think my motion will probably reflect that anyway.
Okay, thank you for letting me say it.
I, I agree with, you know, look, I, I'll make a motion that we table an ordinance approving the general plan amendment request GDF 19 jet dash zero one, so that the applicant can revise the current lines of the open space, medium density, medium high density, and if they want to throw low density in to figure it out, so that they keep those densities at the current level across the project, but rewrite your lines and bring it back in two weeks.
I can second that motion.
I have a motion in a second.
Or do I?
Cliff I.
Ranger I.
Bellistine I.
Kurt I.
Thank you. Item nine, road dedication, continuation of the consideration to approve a road dedication plat for Washington Parkway and Greenspring Drive, Public Works, Mike Shaw, City Attorney, Jesse Starkey. Any other items to discuss on this? Any questions?
Questions?
What happens if we don't improve it?
Mike's gonna run out on us. He'll never even look back at us. Mike's going to run out on us, he'll never even look back at us.
We have a road that's built that we can't use.
And if we can't use it, what happens to the Northern Corridor?
Greenspring's Drive. I'll tell you, like I told him, I'll tell your neighbors I tried.
I don't, I don't think it's just a matter of that we have a road that's there that we can't use. It's, threaten me if I'm wrong, but if it doesn't get approved, we have to go then compensate. Well, the concern I would have, just off the top of my head, of course, is that these developers have developed this road as part of what, currently with the road master plan is a legal exaction. If the road is not used, that is, becomes an illegal exaction from these developers, which means they're. That would only make sense, anything. Money and ground and all that into this, because it's part of the master plan, and if it's intended by the city, not, then it becomes a burden that's imposed upon them that is not necessary. I would suppose that they could make an issue with it.
Let me just make a point, when we signed this resolution, Washington City's resolution supporting the Desert Forest Habitat Conversations Plan Expansion Bill, we added this language. Whereas the, although the Northern Corridor is an important part of the infrastructure plan for future growth in the county, the city council has grave concerns about the close proximity of the Northern Corridor as currently proposed to Washington City, homes and the additional traffic which would flow onto Washington Parkway once it connects to the Northern Corridor, and the city council is looking for all possible mitigations prior to that occurring plan. I, I just, I want to make this point and raise this issue. We would certainly not permanently not approve the dedication, but we have no pressure that we can put on the county to pay attention at paragraph. And we're running out of time to do it, and the pressure is simply to with their resources and their drawings and their plans to move that road away from those homes that we've allowed to be built out there right next to the habitat. Thinking that that would be that forever. We, we're running out of opportunities to create any pressure on the people that could change the lines of that road. I suspect that we would find some sympathetic ears statement that this maybe really needs to be seriously, we really seriously want them to look at what the impact. I don't know how to say that. But if we don't approve this, does that say it, and then we approve it, it's not, but it wouldn't be a problem.
I'll, I'll share my insight, my feelings with your concerns from setting on the MPO and having dealt with the BLM through the Corridors Habitat. Part of the reason the alignments are what they are is the county is trying to stay out of the habitat as much as possible.
I understand.
Because you take another inch and you're taking your life in your own hands, they're saying, hey, we may give you this much, but if you think you're going to come up here, it deals dead. And so I think that's why the alignments are the way they are, is to say, okay, let's try and mitigate this with the least impact that we can on your corridors. If that's your concern, we're playing with the, with the giant out there that, they hold the cars.
I understand.
They hold all the cars.
But they want that other habitat pretty badly, okay, there's a lot of turtles down there.
When you say the other habitat.
This southern area below Sun River, that's going to be part of the trade that would allow for the Northern Corridor.
Well, I don't know that they want it so bad as the county's saying, look, we've got some, we've got a tortoise population that, that we can mitigate this with. The habitat hasn't gone out and looked and said, hey, we want those tortoises out there, this is the county pushing that, to say, here's how we can mitigate that roadway through there, so.
I understand, they're all sitting at the same table.
Stand up and say, we demand that you change, from my interactions and dealing, and I've spent quite a bit of time talking with the, with the local BLM fellow, it was like, you know what, over our dead bodies, well, you take two inches out of this thing. And so I think that the county's, like I said, in fact, originally started up here, and now it's pushed down here, and, and trying to stay as much out of the, the least impact onto that habitat as possible, that maybe we can get a roadway across there. And the other part of that is, I know that your concern is, is other neighboring communities' traffic, but we have responsibility for our own citizens' traffic, how do they get in and out? Right now, we're pushing them all through Greensprings. This is as much for them to get in and out of their homes is, is, is for other traffic to get across.
I, I need to tell you that the few that would go to that exit, that's not their concern.
I think you'd be surprised how many will use that interchange. And I think you'll see the top half of Washington City start to pull that direction.
Concern I have is, I don't necessarily disagree with trying to get, I just don't look at moving the corridor, I just don't think that using a road dedication on a road that's already in is the right way to do it.
Well, but the problem is, we continue to move forward inexorably to this point without stopping, and I'm, I'm not even 100% certain that it's all on the county, I, I would like to see our city take a pause, reevaluate this and take, to see, to see what type, what we can do to mitigate problems there. I, I think you're, I mean, I know, yeah, some of our citizens are going to go up there, but to me, this is, this is largely for other cities coming across their east-west, they're going to be coming.
Where are they coming to? Coming to your commercial centers, your building.
Which is, which exit 10 is, is a huge problem for us, and coming down, coming down Greensprings Drive, that's, and it does.
Do you think you're going to encourage any development on 13 if you don't get people to it?
You know, if they, if they.
So again, I'm fine with that, but the problem is if you're adding to exit 10's issues, you're adding to this.
I would disagree with you.
Greensprings Drive becomes a thoroughfare.
If you can get that through, you'll take away from exit 10.
If we add, if we add a mile to that distance, a half a mile to that distance, and get it away from those homes, they'll still use that road.
Can I?
Still go to that.
I, I will not disagree with you, but I'm saying, where are you going to move it to?
Can I, can I ask a question?
The BLM is not going to let you go through the habitat, you won't get it there.
Well, what they're proposing is not within the habitat, though, still, and that's what this continues being brought up by these councilmen and councilwomen and rangers. What we're talking about, everything you talked about is everything happening within the county, what we're talking about is where it connects within our city, and that's where we have our highest responsibility. I understand the pressures that could happen with just a few developments, whatever alleviation may have had. We have a lot of bordering development that happens right at this area between water parks proposed, hotels, all sorts of things. But yeah, as we move northward, there's going to be some relief, that's going to happen for people to get out. But the concept I feel that Councilwoman Granger has brought up the most is, has this really been honored? And that's the concern that she's brought up, and I think she's brought up some very significant points that should probably still be discussed.
I, I feel like that the St. George City possibly would be supportive of our position, if they, you know, how strongly we felt of. I, I know they're willing to hear us, and me.
I, I won't say that they wouldn't be, I guess I look and say, does, does the gorilla, will the gorilla play with you at that point, I don't think they would.
I think they need to know we mean this.
So you hold your own citizens hostage to prove a point to somebody that doesn't really care about you. The BLM doesn't care, they care about their tortoises, they don't care what you do with your road. They're saying, the only thing we're going to protect is our tortoise.
Well.
So what you're saying is, we're going to hold our own citizens hostage, we're not going to build our roads that we're going to build out to connect our, with our own, because this connects within our own community. So we're not going to connect with our own community to show them that we're going to prove a point that we want them to come through there, and they're saying, hey, we don't care if you come through, we don't, we're not interested in having you to start with.
Yeah, I think.
The problem is, you never get now back. You never get, you never get now back to make an attempt.
The facts, you tell me differently, that's the facts.
Can I ask a question? Let's say in a perfect world, we're going to move the, the road, right? Push it over 100 meters or 200 meters, or whatever it is.
Tells me how much that's going to cost, thank you.
Well, that's, that's the thing, who's, who's going to foot the bill? Right, we've got a free right of way, we've got utilities in the right of way, we've got a developer that's already built a roadway that we would have to then turn around and mitigate, and, and the taxpayer would end up paying all those bills for a, a roadway that was planned prior to any home that existed in, in Greensprings. Now, I get it, there's people that live up there now, but the developer built up to a right of way that they were given, and the homes were purchased and lots were built against a right of way that was, that was planned for, that predated any home.
To the Parkway, I agree, but to the Northern Corridor, absolutely disagree.
Well, it, I can show you plans that say.
I know.
That, to show an arrow to a.
But there's never been an approval.
The thing that I feel.
It's always been, it's been, it's certainly been contemplated for the last 18 years.
Never and still isn't an approval.
Well, there's no approval on the Northern Corridor, period.
That's my.
But it's, okay, I get that, and I'm not trying to argue with you, but it's been contemplated, and, and the right of way's been granted to provide this portion through Washington City to that connection. Whether or not the connection gets approved, that's still up in the air.
Yes, it is.
But, but the contemplated route goes all the way back to 2000.
And what's our city's part in this, for our citizens, I know that the road needs to go in port St. George for islands, for San Claro's, for their access to be able to get across this county, get past St. George Boulevard, to get past the Sunset Club intersection, I know those are the pressure points. Had a great presentation on that today, and that, that reduction in traffic would be like 13% or something. I understand the need of our community, but I'm not sure the rest of the community in the county understand what it might be for Washington City. I, we have to pay some attention to that, and that's something that pays some attention to that. Now, I don't know if this dedication helps us to get that attention, but I don't see it as a permanent thing, it's a, it's a temporary thing, we just want to get some attention.
My.
Maybe this isn't the way, but then give me a better way, because we've done nothing for this.
My concern with what Councilwoman Granger is saying to add in the support is, I, I hear varying levels of understanding of what's been done to meet what's in red on this statement on here. My, we've talked about in the perfect world, if I got something for free, I would take it, and likewise, not at an expense to somebody else. But at this moment, when it still is to some degree flexible and change, if there is something that we failed to consider that should have been considered, which I felt enough concern from varying council members and from people, I think it right, it at least merits a little bit of an understanding to verify truly what is the cost, because if the cost at this time makes sense to make a little bit of a more cost, it would be just as negligent not to consider that as it is to avoid it. And so I, I think it's a moot, a moot point to go and say, okay, you should take it because it's already paid for, but if there's some people bringing some genuine concerns, saying, no, 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 let's make an adjustment and it's worth the investment, I just feel there's enough derision within the council that it should be discussed.
Let's take the Northern Corridor out of this particular one, for the mere fact, this is nothing more than the interconnectivity of your own community. This ties your exit, your Greensprings Drive, the Main Street, the exit 13, that's what this roadway does. Now, if the connectivity to the Northern Corridor is the hard burn in the future, you can argue that point and say, you're going to force them to bring it around. My experience is, you're picking a horse that's never going to.
My biggest thing has nothing to do with that, my biggest thing honestly is within the city. And that's it, I, I, that's what my question is at right now.
You've got a huge problem exit 10 right now, because you're forcing everything down, how do you disperse that traffic around? Especially if you want to talk about development of 13.
Which comes back to that, I'm not against the road that connects the things, but is the road doing what it should best possibly do?
Well, I think it is, for the, it's master plan to do that.
And that's what you think, and that is not what she thinks, and that's what I'm unsure about. And that's why it's, that's odd.
That's what you got elected to do, is make those decisions and say, where does the roadway go, and what is the connectivity?
And I don't see that any different than how you got elected either, so this is why we are elected.
The question is, could we, could we table this discussion, they have a court session on it, and spend some time. I, I'm not anxious to deny this in cause of.
I don't know why we would do it, I mean, to me, this part of the discussion is.
It's about the heart.
It, it's Washington City, it's your own community.
But once we improve this.
Your community.
Can we leverage this?
There, again, I'll go back to the same thing, you're going to leverage your own citizen ready to say, I'm going to prove a point to the world out there, and that's not true.
You can't convince me that it's critical, right?
Built now, on the table to receive now.
I understand that.
I mean, why wouldn't you take, why wouldn't you take it here today and say, look, okay, the road's built, it was master plan to be built, it's been provided for us. I mean, to me, I, I scratched my head at the discussion to say, I can understand where you're coming from with Northern Corridor and your concerns. I probably don't share those same concerns with you as, as I voiced, I probably have a little different look at that, because I look at that in a, in a little different way, as a benefit to our community, you look at it as a liability to our community. Just different points of view. But this.
I have no problem that it's a benefit for exit 13, but I don't.
That's our community.
But I don't think it has to be on where it is, and they won't change the drawing, they won't submit to drawing.
And I, and I've told you why, I've told you why, what, what, look at the boundary of the, of the habitat, the boundary goes up like this and across here. To bring that road up and through, how many more acres of habitat are you going through, the BLM looks at that and says, we're willing to give you this, but we are not going to give you that, because you're in our habitat, that's the attitude they have.
That's not my argument.
Oh, they pride, originally it's already clear up here.
I, you know, again, for everybody that, that will be impacted by it, I, I really truly do, but there's not a home up there that predates where that roadway.
Well, that's just arguing one point to that, which is the, but increased traffic coming down Greensprings Drive, that, that doesn't predate this. If you, if you bring that across there, and.
That, why do you think Greenspring Drive was built with a five lane?
My problem is less about Greenspring's Drive being planned as, as a, as a five lane than it is exit 10, which has been a known problem for us, and I, I.
It's coming to exit 10 across Red Hills Parkway anyway. It's coming to exit, the traffic's coming through exit 10 now, whether it comes down Greenspring Drive or it comes across Red Hills Parkway, or Red Chris Parkway, both of them.
I, I felt to connect one thing in your argument of, why was it built with five lanes down Greensprings when that was built far before even the conversation?
Oh, no, it wasn't, oh, no, no, it absolutely wasn't, I can show you on the map.
And Northern Corridor's been as long as I've been in Washington, back to 1996.
I'm just looking at plans and stuff that said it's been driven, drawn and stuff, and I've seen anything between 96 and 2004 with none of that.
We don't proactively go build major arterial road, or, you know, big roads before development comes, comes, the roads come after the development, when the need's there. You know, I mean, I, look, again, to, to change the route right now, look, if the Northern Corridor wants to come and loop over and then come back down and tie in, they can do that.
At their expense, yes, I would love that.
But, but for us to move the current Washington Parkway is millions and millions and millions of dollars to our taxpayers, and I'm not suggesting, I, I'm not comfortable.
I agree, so.
Forcing on our taxpayers, maybe.
Well, so, but that's the problem, Washington.
What leverage, Northern Corridor, what would you do? What, what as a council can we do when we say we're concerned about that? I, yeah, I don't want to. Want to leverage. Where's our leverage, we make a statement and it gets important. And they say, well, we're supported, well, we're not supported, but this statement in here tells, how do we work with that?
We'd be the devil's advocate in this one.
Just this one?
They don't move a roadway, doesn't mean that they've ignored the statement, right?
I've never heard the statement mention that, so I don't debate that. The Northern Corridor is going through Congress in Washington DC, right? Well, they're still trying.
They're trying, and that's, yeah, actually, that's, that feels actually dying.
That one died, yeah. I know, I visited with Chris Stewart about that, and they, they understand. Also understand trying to connect east and west corridors.
Now, I'm going to say, well, it's not that bad, I recognize the need, I'm saying, let's steer it up a little higher, put an extra mile on it, create at least a buffer for people who thought they had a permanent buffer, and let's be considerate of our own people, and that doesn't mean we don't have a Northern Corridor, doesn't mean we don't move into exit 13, doesn't mean that, it's, let's some pressure here, if we have any influence at all.
I'll tell you, some of the frustration I, I get a little bit of this is because we go through a similar process out in the fields, but it affects a different neighborhood, but we're moving just as many cars, there's zero of this kind of discussion, who does it serve? St. George City and some of our own residents, about, about similar, it's a similar project.
Which one?
With your Merrill Road project.
Merrill Road affects a heck of a lot.
And you dove that road right down into people's backyards that, that right now have had fields in their backyard, back to this day, they don't know that road's coming, you wait till that gets out there.
Most roads are disturbed now, this road is.
No, that, that's not serving them, absolutely it's not. It's serving people that are going to your airport, it's serving people that are going to the other side of the county, hitting the Southern Corridor. It's a similar, it's a very similar project to what you're talking about here. But you went through that process with nothing.
Nothing.
Now, all of a sudden, we get up here and it's a, and it's a problem.
That's not true.
Well-
It's not true at all.
It was a positive.
That is an over, breaking statement.
It was a positive.
It was a well-discussed council discussion, which everyone agreed with the discussion of. But what you had at that point was unified council. What you don't have on this is unified council.
Well, that's what I-
So that is not the same thing. So just because it happens in a different place, it's a complete ignorant statement on your part.
No, but what I'm saying, it's a, it's a very similar problem. It's a very similar problem.
No.
Okay.
It's where the cricket's speech.
Well, I-
So my que, my question is for you council members is, you hold Washington City hostage?
Now, that is not correct.
With the, with the-
That is so not correct to hold your citizens correct.
It's actually what you're doing.
So anytime you don't get your way, we're holding the citizens correct. Is that what you're saying?
I'm not saying that.
And we're not saying that because when Washington citizens come and talk to us, they're saying, look, we feel like what you guys have put out there hasn't been heard. We're concerned on some things. I feel like there's some misunderstandings. All of a sudden, that makes me like, that I hate my citizens?
I didn't say that.
Well, hostage, what kind of kind way do you want me to take that word?
I didn't say you held them hostage.
Or us. Okay, I'm a part of the us. So if you use hostage, I'm going to have some sort of feelings that match that word you threw out there. That's inappropriate.
I, I've used that term tonight, and I'll tell you how I feel it is. When you don't give them a road that they can travel, you've held them hostage. That's my term, that's the reason I use that term, is to say, if we aren't going to connect that road across that through there, then you've, you've basically said, okay, you can't-
None of us have ever said, don't do a road. We're saying, how is it lined up for the best use?
What you're saying tonight, what is on the agenda is to receive a road. The road that's from here to here. That's what you're discussing tonight. And, and we've taken that and moved it on over to this road. And I can understand, because this road does connect to that road eventually, so I can see the connecting point.
That's the second part of the question, is if we approve this road, fine. You know, I really don't have a lot of heartburn about that. But then, how can we, as a council and a city, assert some influence about where the line is drawn?
Do we get with St. George?
I think-
You and I get with Sean and John and see where they're at, where they can help us out.
Yeah, I don't know that stopping this does anything except, not approving this does anything except give a message if anybody listens to it. There are probably other ways we can give that message.
Yeah.
Personally, I-
But I think we need to work on the message.
Personally, I don't think it's fair to, not fair, I don't think it's fair to the city to put ourselves in a, a position of liability on not approval, and so for that, I'd like to make an emotion that that we approve a road dedication platform for Washington Parkway and Green Springs Drive.
A motion?
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second.
It's a part of the discussion out there, just, I don't really think it's fair to talk about what's fair. I mean, just to-
Thanks for lighting that up.
I'm having a hard time telling whether you're serious or not.
No, I, for me, this is just, it's just now. Now is a good time to make a strategy and, and to, and because you're not going to get now back. I don't, I don't know that there is any better solution that could possibly even come forward. But if we, if I lose now as an opportunity without some effort to place into this, to, to study this out, check some, check some things, staff takes, looks at it, the mayor and, and Councilwoman Granger takes a run at it, I, I just don't think we'll ever get any, we don't, we should never get now back.
If I felt that it was fair or ethical to put the taxpayers of Washington City, and I mean all the taxpayers, not just the few in the north end of Green Springs, but all the taxpayers at risk, a foot in a fat bill and, and to, 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 to use as leverage, then I wouldn't have made the motion. But I don't think that's right.
If we get out there and we take a look at it and, and the costs are there, then we're making a decision based on the numbers. I'm fine with that. I'm fine with, what I'm not fine with is not pausing now and, and taking a look at, at the issue. Because you just never get now back, so if, if-
Well, we, we've, we've told them the alignment, we've had them put the road in. The improvements are, are there, or, you know, in.
Before, I have another motion and a second.
Board name.
Cliff name.
This is always so interesting. And, um, it isn't about adding a couple of million dollars to the cost to the city. It's not about the Washington Parkway. If I knew that we had council active supporting working on the northern corridor, then I'm a gay. Okay? And I just need some concerted effort to do that. It's, it's where they put the connection, it's not where we build the Washington Parkway. Okay? That's the issue.
I understand that this, this alignment that we're currently talking about not only, again, predates the homes that are there, it also predates the council that's sitting today. It's, it's not, it's something that's been in place for a long time.
Yeah, I, I am-
But it's not fair.
I get that, but it, but it's this council that makes the decision, and I, and I think Councilwoman, you and I can
Yeah.
get after it.
Well said. Thank you, Councilman.
And I, you know, I'm a, I'm a yay for that reason. Uh, I appreciate the dialogue and the debate. I think we need dialogue and debate this, I think it needs a little bit of on their city's part. To get them to pay for the next fire. And at least put, submit two plans, because they submitted one and refused to add another plan or another drawing, if they said the other one, at least submit one. And that submit one didn't consider Washington City. That's offensive. And I want to get their attention. I don't know how best to do it. Probably refusing to go along with Washington Parkway isn't the way to do it. But sometimes, I feel like the Washington Parkway is more for the northern corridor's sake than it is for that park and city.
Thank you. Well said.
Agreed, yes.
So are you a yay?
Yeah, it's a yay.
Okay. That passed a three to two.
Well, finish voting.
Oh, excuse me. Well, you guys, I'm assuming, you're going to assume guys, so.
Correct, aye.
All right, that passed a three to two. Thank you. Thank you for the discussion. Item 10, agreements, consideration to approve a road improvement agreement for the Washington Parkway and Green Springs Drive.
Mayor, this would just be the agreement to accept the dedication.
All right.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
The, the agreement to accept the dedication.
Right. But it still needs another vote.
Yeah, that's right. I just wanted to explain it, that's why nobody was really talking up.
Well, and- And Drew did have a comment. It looks like he had a comment earlier. I, I, I suspect that's-
Drew, it looks like he has a comment all the time. He has a comment all the time.
All right, I need a motion.
So, no, wait a second. So, a couple of things I mentioned last time, we tabled it, but we didn't get formal to it. There's a couple of things that, that will be changed in this, based on my, uh, recommendation or my requirement, and that is, uh, under provisions on page two, that under additional provisions, assignment, the city shall not assign its rent to this agreement without express written permission of First Nation. No, because when we have a roadway dedicated to us, it's, we were, we're bound by state law. We can't just give property away. We can't abandon a roadway. Let's say, let's say the, let's say those roads never went in, twenty years down the line. Nobody ever uses those roads again because, because we fly, I don't know. We don't use roads. If we abandon the road, we still have to go to public hearing to abandon those roadways. So that's not typical, we'd have in an agreement, so we won't have that. The title commitment is that, um, is that the, the party that provides us with, with public improvements always gets the title report for us, that we'll make sure that we don't receive roadways that somebody's cousin in Alaska owns half of right now. We, they, they get the title report for us. They should probably already have it, but that, that's just basic stuff in it. So otherwise, but otherwise, that's fine. If I were an attorney writing it for someone, a, a developer, and hadn't done this necessarily a lot, I may put that, but we don't. Oh, and Michael, I think, uh, Mr. Show, we talked about a time period of starting. It was left, I think, I think blank in terms of when the commencement for finishing the improvements, just so it was not left blank. And I thought you said commencement within thirty, commencement within thirty days, finish within typically is what he, six months, a year? Yeah. Basic stuff, but we don't. Although, if we could have this kind of debate, what we came back up again, maybe we could, but, uh, those things are just, are basic stuff. I just want to make sure we're in it, we've made that clear.
All right, thank you. I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the, uh, the road improvement agreement for the Washington City Parkway and Green Springs Drive.
I have a motion and a second.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion and a second.
Board aye.
Cliff aye.
Granger aye.
Ellis aye.
Torrey aye.
All right. Item 11, award of bid, ratifying the award of bid for the emergency river work at Sullivan Park.
Kind of ironic because it's done. Uh, the contractor actually finished today. This was done under an emergency permitting process. We got the contractor in. Uh, in your packet, you had our, uh, bid calculations. We did get the, the quotes from those contractors. PCI was, are low bid on that. Uh, PCI did a great job. They came in, they mobilized quickly, they finished up the job, and they actually-
That looks good. That looks really good. I went out today, it looks really good.
So we're going to survive the floods coming this spring?
Well, this is just the first, this is the first phase of what needs to be done on the project. We need to do some more, but this should protect us with the amount of floods that we would get. I mean, if we could get worse, it could cause us some, some issues. But, uh, the total project, so we're, we're done with the project. Uh, the contractor came right in at bid. We didn't have any change orders on him. Interstate rock was the rock supplier on the project. They came in at $39,860. And the engineering cost, you know, we haven't got his bill on that, but it's usually not more than 20% on a project. So we're looking around 132,000 on completion of this project, which is well under what I thought it was going to be. I, I really figured it would be 150,000 plus. And then again, this is a project that the flood control authority, advisory committee has agreed to send it to the executive for approval to fund some 75% of this, so.
What's the date? I, I don't, I don't have it in my schedule for the next flood control.
Uh, I don't know, because we've kind of moved those around. They're not monthly anymore, so I'm not exactly sure.
I was the same way. I kind of looked for it, and I couldn't find it, but I, I just assumed, I got interrupted, so I assumed I didn't look hard enough.
They'll also, if there's enough things that could, on the agenda, they'll call a meeting.
Yeah, I don't think they've, I don't think they've actually established a date yet.
Right.
We probably, we probably ought to commit to text each other, but I'm sure we all, this one's pretty important.
Oh, I'll make sure that you're there. I'll come and get you.
I appreciate that. I, I am a little disappointed you didn't bring pictures, but, uh, I, I guess I could just drive down there.
I actually have, I could put up on the screen what the project was, but the engineers and designers would like to see it.
All right. So, Mike, the, uh-
I was being a little facetious, but you're going to grant my-
Amount.
Oh, yeah, yeah, see?
Mike, the amount ended up being 74,262,12 for PCI. That's what the bid tab shows. I just didn't know, but change first, change last.
Actually, their bid tab was 73,111, or their price. So it actually came in under their bid.
So do you want to give me that for a motion?
73,115 to PCI. And then 39,860 interstate rock, and then approximately 20,000 to Rosenberg.
Okay, you're going to have to start over. I'm going to write it down now. I figured, I thought I was going to remember.
73,115 to progressive contracting. 39,860 to interstate rock. And approximately 20,000 for Rosenberg Engineering.
20,000 towards who?
Rosenberg Engineering.
We don't have those numbers, I-
Right?
We just have the bids.
You, you have the bid.
So I'll make the motion. I'll motion. You ready for that?
I'm ready for it.
I'll make a motion that we award the bids for the emergency river work at Sullivan Park to PCI in the amount of 73,115. Interstate rock in the amount of 39,860. And Rosenberg Engineering in the amount of 20,000.
I, I think we need to say ratifying rather than awarding, just for technical-
Because it's already been done?
It's already, it's done.
Ratify the bid.
Okay, then, I'll amend my motion to say ratify the award of the bid for the emergency river work at Sullivan River Park. You want me to list the amounts again? Okay.
She got them the first time.
Second?
Motion and a second.
Board aye.
Cliff aye.
Granger aye.
Ellis aye.
Torrey aye.
All right, anything to report?
That doesn't let me, it still lets me look at the pictures, doesn't it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
No, he has to close it.
This photo, aerial photo, a year ago, a year ago, we seen it. Put the river right in here. The rain had moved over that way within a year. When he did this design, we met Monday, Wednesday. Already Friday-
That's the trail there, yeah.
This is the trail.
Yeah.
But we met on Wednesday. He did his design based off of what they drew it on Wednesday. He did his design on this by Friday. And that's what turned into the emergency by Friday, and he had another 40. Trail, we were about, oh, we were through color. And he did the, the, well, when we met with, uh, Rick, it was probably tight on the bed here, it was probably 15 feet. And on Friday, there was two feet of soil, but then the other cut underneath the trail. So on that Friday, that's what really constituted, we got to get in there, we got to get motion. This is actually, so we got this protected here, but this is actually, we put this in because we have such a huge snowpack. And if we get a water rain, we are going to see, say, we've never seen it on fire. We're going to have more snowpack around the pit. And so, that's what's really brought a concern us, like we need to get this across the bridge, people, that was a river, no, we didn't. We had a short part of it. If what's happening is whatever's working, he said, if we don't do this, the river's going to break.
Do you guarantee we'd have no microburst in the meantime? At all?
You know, just-
Absolute 100%.
Just, just to add a little note to that, is, is our, our, uh, our watershed and, um, and our snowpack actually have broken 87-year-old record.
So, yeah, that's, that's where-
Worse than '05.
That, that's what really brought this, because we need to get in, we need to get it before we get some snow melt. You know, warm rains hitting it. Oh, you're still in it from it.
I didn't know I had that number.
So, I mean, it, it, if you get out there, it, they've done a great job. It's, 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 they've laid the banks back. You can't see the rock, because it's all buried in there. So, um, yeah, this is, this is prior to them starting to lay any rock in. The rock you see is what we laid in on the Friday, just to protect the trail from getting washed out. And, uh, this is actually prior to PCI rolling in. This is our crews.
You had to get permission just to do that, right?
We actually had, we actually got an emergency permit. We actually got a verbal permit. We actually are not permitted right now. But they gave us the verbal permit to go ahead, and we've got some, we've got to come in and, and do a little study now, but-
And this is apparently not just about our trails, it's about our park.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So is the, by putting the bar further up, hopefully that will make things push further away?
So that's exactly what the plan is, is that bar is to push the river, try to push it back to the south. So, yeah, I think, I think we did really good on that. I, I'm just amazed at our cost. Interstate Rock, I, I expected double on that rock because we ran through the President's Day weekend and had my crews out there stacking it and loading it up. And Interstate Rock had trucks rock, hauling through. Now we've got the little snowstorm that came through on that Sunday night. We had to shut down Monday. But then we hauled rock the rest of the week in there and then PCI mobilized in there and was in and out of there.
So if it's not major mudslides or meandering rivers, what do we do to keep you entertained?
Don't give me roads.
Yeah, the roads. So, and, and then just on a side note, we've been really working, you know, as, as, as staff members, you know, the fire chief, police chief Roger, about getting prepared for anything that might happen. Monday, I ordered in more sandbags. We got another twenty-four thousand bags in. We probably, we probably have about a hundred thousand bags in stock right now, so we're well above any city around us. We did that early on because there will be a run on sandbags and we won't be able to get them.
So while we're on that, let's touch upon that. I was gonna touch upon this on my report, but I think this is just as good a time. Because of the snowpack, we are anticipating that there, you know, there is a chance depending on the spring issue. The, the concern we have is we're so late with the, with the snowpack, not just rains, but, you know, we can go from freezing to eighty degrees in a matter of a couple of days. We're pretty, we're pretty convinced. So we met as, as a group to discuss potentially anticipation. The flooding, unlike the, the thunderstorms that affect us during the monsoon season, this will be a, a virgin river incident if we have one. The advantage we have with that is we usually have some pretty good, uh, forward warning. Usually it takes about eight hours for floods where the main drainage comes in near Zion National Park. It takes about eight hours to get down to us. So that gives us time to prepare unlike the, the, the monsoons do. So what we've done is we've identified the potential hazard areas and, and some of those, uh, sit within that, am I using the right term, the floodway kind of area? We've identified those areas. Uh, those are being mapped right now for us. We have met with, um, we've identified staging areas, staging areas, and we've received permission for staging areas in case we need to do sandbagging. The staging areas are located primarily on the south of the river. We have staging areas at the LDS chapel on Washington Fields Road, on Log Lane Chapel and on, um, two thousand South. And then we received permission today to stage here a licensed parking lot for anything north. Um, we are meeting with some of the civic religious leaders down in those areas within the next week to just, uh, uh, let them know how information would come down in the event of, of an incident and.
And for volunteers?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of, because that's, that's kind of what we're hoping that if we can just be very, uh, oh, yeah, and communicate clearly on where our priority areas are. So that, as they mobilize, that they can help us in the priority areas as well. We think that'll work out well. Um, we also, uh, have talked with, um, um, contractors that'll be on, available to pull snags out of the river near the, near the bridges, because those can effectively become dams for us. And so what we'll do is just have these contractors come in. We'll know where we're positioning and we'll be able to snag out any, any, anything with respect to that. So again, we don't want to get everyone concerned, but, um, I mean, we don't think at this point there's a need to do that, but Mike's good about saying if we prepare, nothing will happen. If we do, don't prepare, it'll be a complete disaster. And so, um, I think we're in pretty good shape at the moment. We're, oh, we're watching the snow tail um, indicators as well, and hopefully we'll just start to see that snowpack come off at a good, reasonable pace. Um, so that's, I was gonna kind of update on that anyway, but I think we're, we're kind of organizing a little bit in that direction.
Thank you.
They got twelve feet of snow in Kolob in two days.
Twelve feet?
You see five step?
Yeah.
It was thirty-four inches in one day.
Yeah, because we had a meeting in the Conservancy District and, um, that was a big concern, is the weather. And we're hoping that it will stay cold in the mountains, even though it gets warmer here.
And you can see the rocks on the right now, you have that, that's one day of sixty five.
Kolob is, needs to be filled because, and now it's kind of a blessing that somebody put some, some fish in there. They had to kill out the fish and drain it. And they, we purposely kept Quail Creek a little lower so that we can put more in Quail Creek and it's not hot also. Anything to discuss from your assigned committees? Did you want to talk about this, Councilwoman Granger, or did we talk about it?
I, you know, I just want to say about that, I just, I appreciate the two nobles. I appreciate that we're trying together as a council, but we need to listen to all the sides. I appreciate that they were supporting. And I appreciated the reasons that the, it's always good to work with the council. This is, it's not always painless, but it's always still good.
I'd just like to say on my part, as we work so hard as a council, always keeping in mind to support, we're all looking for the best, best for the city. And so it's important for us to keep that in our conversation, not to split us up and localize intent when it's really just concern of understanding.
Thank you, officer.
Why describe it as right?
That's right.
We're not all of the same mind, but, um, collectively. Do you think that they become the best solution, so?
Thank you. Shady Manager report.
Let me update you on a couple of projects. Some trepidation on some of my roads. But, uh, so Merrill Road, uh, we're looking at advertising about May fourteenth. I'm just gonna kind of keep, you know what's going on there. I'll just keep you updated on dates. May fourteenth on, on dates, hopefully we open bids on June fourth, right around that time period. A reminder that we do have an open house on milepost eleven on March nineteenth at the community center. Um, we are in about sixty percent design review on the Parkway. Uh, the improvements on Main Street, and because they're much more complicated, um, because of utilities, and I know I've given some different orbit problems coming. And I did indicate to you that we would not have improvements on Main Street completed before the monsoon season, but it looks like actually bidding won't be until around August. By the time we get this on, so, but we do still plan on being before the council end of March to have you discuss cross section. Because that's a big important piece for us to put into the design. Um, you've probably seen some work, those of you who've headed up and down, uh, Green Springs Drive with some limited lane access and other things. That's that, uh, Green Springs feeder line, the power line going up there. So there's boring and tunneling going up there and they're just about fifty percent complete on. SCS, uh, speaking of power, a couple of other issues with power. Turner family signed the easements, um, on their, for the rebuild on the Turner turf farm. So that project will begin in a couple of weeks. Um, uh, they're doing the, they'll be doing the staking and the construction in the next couple of weeks. And then we're currently having the design, uh, re, the design done by ICP, the engineering firm with regards to the State A substation. You all may know State A substation is our oldest substation. Got some concerns we've had for a while and, uh, so that's, that's due a rebuild. So the design work is on that.
How old is that one?
Well, I, I have to probably have somebody else answer that. I, I don't know the actual date on it.
I think it actually says it on there.
Did we pick it up from, uh, did we build it or did it get picked up from Cal? Okay, so it could have been, so we became a power system in nineteen eighty-seven. Um, and so, do you think it was there?
I think we took, I think we just, we were just already so outdated, it's mostly lost.
And, and we are, we have updated. I don't want anybody to think that we haven't done anything since nineteen eighty-seven, but it is our oldest station and ready for some, some upgrades. And that's been in our capital plan last year or two. And then, it's with, it is with pleasure that I can tell you, that within the next two weeks, the work on Veterans Park and the LDS church, they will be completed. So. Yeah.
I saw him.
We got everything all worked out, so that'll be, that'll be complete. I think, Mayor, that's, that's it.
I have a question. If, if Washington Elementary were replaced, would that change where we might refer to have?
I don't know if I could answer that. I'd probably have to be the ones who, who handled that. Um, I know the only thing that, so I can't answer that. Um, I think one of the concerns, of course, the school district has is there's no way they can recoup a replacement because they don't get to sell the ground. Because it's not their ground. It's our, our P and P. And I know that's at least been one of their concerns. And the other thing we've known for a long time is that at least federal highways, their preference is, again, what, what the weight of all this is, I can't answer, but their preference is to not bring, uh, potential off ramps in front of elementary schools. So we know that that's, now whether that stops them, I can't say that, but certainly it probably is intuitive.
It certainly didn't stop them because it carried on as the, as a final. So obviously it wasn't a stopping point.
I, I assume they'd have some language in this study whenever that comes out.
Yeah, we're anticipating, yeah, the study will be out right around the nineteenth, I think, of March, the full. I had that date down for some reason.
It's the open house, right?
It's the open house.
Oh, that's the open house, but that's when it'll all be presented, yeah. Yeah.
Councilwoman Granger, my, my recollection when we met with the school district was they were intending to upgrade. Is that right? They had no intentions of doing anything with that one at this point.
They have, but it's one of those things you get frightened. Push that on the local one, but if it were in our favor to do that, because it is possibly the oldest elementary. There have been other elementaries that they virtually almost given away. I, I never did any venture, but, um, there are east and west and per, and elementary. I, I don't think the cost of the land or the lack of costing lands the only deciding factor. I just wonder if, um, while we're in the middle of this decision coming up.
I, I, I'll, I'll be honest with you. I don't think it's gonna affect the preferred alternative at this moment, but that's just my opinion. Especially since it's so uncertain at this point.
Chatham News has a list of a hundred and fifteen legislators that were, uh, with charter schools.
Oh, I, with interest, I could add some names to that.
I'm just, I'm just saying, there's a list out there.
Yeah, there's a few, I've found that, uh, part of it pretty interesting.
There are some that go even back further than the names they have.
Yeah, I watch them.
I have those original votes.
Are you done, Cap?
Sorry.
No, no worries. Thank you. All entertaining motions, adjourned.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.